You guys ready?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Please forgive us for the delay. It was important that we had some documents in our package tonight. So I sincerely ask for forgiveness and thank you for being patient. We have a beautiful meeting tonight. We're going to honor a lot of our youth in our community. And I just can't tell you how happy I am when we get the opportunity to honor our youth. I'd like to call to order the seventy-sixth session at eleventh council approximately at six fifteen. At this time, Councilman Parker, could you introduce the invocation speaker?
Thank you, brother President Protem. And good evening, everyone. This afternoon, our invocation will be delivered to us by Pastor Laura Kelsey of the First Presbyterian Church.
Good evening. I want to thank Pastor Parker and the Councilwoman Protem who are here today as we just celebrated our-
Pastor Kelsey, you just need to turn your mic on. It's the button on the right. There you go.
Okay. Thank you for the invitation tonight. We just celebrated it First Presbyterian Church of Pontiac, our one hundred and ninety-ninth anniversary on February twenty-sixth. We began in eighteen twenty-four, so it is an honor to serve the city for one hundred and ninety-nine years. Let's pray. Oh, Lord, we thank you for being here with us this evening. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to come together as the citizens of Pontiac and celebrate our young people and the many things our community has done to succeed and to share your love and compassion and justice with others. We ask you, Lord, that you bless this meeting, that you bless all that are gathered, that together we may work for unity, justice, and peace. We ask you, Lord, that you give us opportunities to speak as you are calling us to do so and to work together in your name, that all we may do is we do through love and to strengthen one another. All this we pray in the name of your son. Amen.
Amen. I thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we do a moment of silence. Let us take a moment to pause and honor those that have passed since the last time we met. They are our community members, family, and friends. In remembrance, James Stanley, April Denise Jackson, Robert Kins, Annie Jean Harris, Curly Gatewood, Tbilado Bernard, Lulo C. DeWitt, Abkambi, Leon Thomas Leduff, and Harold Harris. And for all those that maybe I didn't mention, please think about our friends and family and community members that we lost. Thank you. Deputy Kurt Grandison, could you do please roll call, please?
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
He's coming in.
Present.
Thank you. James.
Here.
McGinnis. Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford. Mr. President Protem, you have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Grandison. At this time, can I get a motion to accuse Councilmember, I mean Councilmember Relaford?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Goodman, that we excuse Councilman Relaford for a family issue. At this time, can I have a roll call?
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Here, yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Councilmembers, are there any amendments to the agenda tonight? Here ain't none. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nichols, supported by Councilman Parker, that we approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion? Here ain't none. Could I have a roll call, please?
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Uh, thank you. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Goodman, that we approve of the consent agenda, which covers March the sixth, twenty-twenty-three Economic Development Housing and Planning Subcommittee meeting minutes, and March the seventh, twenty-twenty-three City Council meeting minutes. Could I have a roll call, please?
James?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Uh, thank you. At this time, you get to hear about what your council, councilperson or councilwoman, a councilman has been doing for the last past thirty days. At this time, we have our subcommittee meetings. Communication Engagement Operations.
So the Communications Engagement Operations Subcommittee did not meet last month. However, there are things that have been happening thanks to the multiple departments that make up that subcommittee. Obviously, many people have begun to see more communications coming out of the city that have begun to highlight a lot of our good work that's happening here as well as, you know, just making sure that the citizens are well-informed, obviously, you know, with the recent storm, being able to push out that information, as well as being able to make continued improvements to our cable department and our IT. Very soon, we will be hopefully unveiling our new website for the city. So we have been working very hard and diligently trying to make sure that Pontiac not only is doing good things and making sure that people see and can hear about the good things that we are doing. That way, we can continue to do those things, get highlighted for that, to bring in more resources, and obviously make Pontiac not only the place to be, but show people that's the place to be. But separate from that, we've just been making just constant improvements, obviously, within the IT department, trying to make sure that the city itself is able to run efficiently and effectively. And as a person who did IT for a very long time, it's a very key and important thing when it comes to running a city. So those are the updates from the past month.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. At this time, Finance and Personnel, Councilman Nicholson.
The Finance and Personnel Committee meets on the second Tuesday of every month. I'm sorry, the second Thursday of every month. We met on the ninth at two PM here in the council conference room. We went through the financial statements through February and spoke about the city's continued outside financial resources that are supporting the city and making sure that we are keeping up on all of our accounting practices. We did also review the city's recent extension that was granted by the state for our audit. So we do have an extension through April third to turn our audit into the state. The state, what we are waiting for is the audited financial statements from the VIBA. And once we receive those, our internal auditor can send our finished audit out to the state. It'll be well before April third. We were presented with itemized grant schedule as well as the accountancy grid for us to review for all of our grants that are open, so we can ask more questions. And we will invite our grants manager for future sessions so that way we can go through some of those as financials continue to roll out for the different larger grants that we've recently been awarded. Went through our open positions as well as recently staffed positions. And we reviewed the city's continued recruitment strategy and got news that open enrollment is completed for our staff. And we are in the process of reviewing new broker relationships for our benefits for the future.
Thank you. At this time, Law and the Courts. Councilman Parker.
Thank you, President Protem. Although the Law and Courts did not meet in last month due to the weather, the updates, though, would be that the Fiftyth Court District certainly has been doing a marvelous job of catching up with all the backlog log of cases for the landlords and evictions issues that centers around the Black Court concerns. The Oakland County Prosecutor's Office is still working on their expungement event, which they anticipate to hold sometime in this spring. And they will be visiting some of the various community meetings that are established in the community so they can get a better idea from some of the citizens as to how they can move forward and make sure that they understand what the role and responsibility of the Oakland County Prosecutor's Offices is. We certainly talked with Mr., we want to thank the Code Enforcement Department for the excellent job they're doing in catching up and keeping track of all the issues that they deal with as they move about the city. And finally, we want to make sure that there is still some discussion in regards to the eviction cases and those that are pending and the homeless and mental health issues that we are dealing with on an ongoing basis. And there's been multiple meetings held throughout the month. And we're working on trying to get all of those people together at one location so we can begin to put processes in place to more clearly address that issue. Our next meeting will be the fourth Monday of April at four PM in the council chamber, and that is our meeting this month.
I thank you, Councilman Parker. Parks, Recreation, and Public Works, Councilwoman James.
Yes, Parks and Recreation and Public Works met on Monday, February the twenty-seventh. And we had a presentation by Oakland County Parks in regards to Hawthorne Park. As many of you know, the city of Pontiac is in the process of partnering with Oakland County Parks to take over the day-to-day management of that park. And they have committed to investing one point eight million dollars to upgrade Hawthorne Park. I did pass around in the audience some of the information that they presented for us on that day. And we thought that the ideas and things that they presented were good and they were approved. So we are still in the process of finalizing our agreement for that partnership. But I think it is going to be a great thing for the city of Pontiac. So that is moving forward. I can't give you any dates as to when. That should actually formally kick off. I'm not sure that will take place in the summer of twenty-three, but we certainly will get that approved and operational as soon as possible. We also had a presentation from our Grants Director, Alexandria Berngasser, in regards to how the Opera Funds are going to be used for parks. And I think the residents also were able to see the presentation on, two weeks ago, that was given by the director in terms of how those monies are going to be spent. But the breakdown is that, you know, they will be divided between the seven districts. And each district will get approximately between five and six hundred thousand dollars that they will be able to invest in neighborhood parks and mini parks. So we're going to focus that money on upgrading where the real need is, in those local parks, in the neighborhood parks, and in the mini parks. Also, we talked about, we talked about the, for Public Works, we talked about the storm and the trees that need to come down as a result of that storm. The DPW says they are finalizing the contract with Curb Co. also, who are going to be doing, helping us with the, with potholes in the city. So once that contract has been finalized, they will be able to go to work, working on our potholes. The Johnitorial RFP has gone out for bid, as well as the Street Sign RFP have gone up for bids. We, we are working on the trailer and mowers for the parks and ground cutting. That contract has been approved. The sidewalk trip hazard cutting will start on March the first. As you know, we have a contractor who is going to be doing some repairs to sidewalks, just kind of grinding, not grinding, but actually sawing those level with the, with the other side. That will start March first. And the CDBG sidewalk replacement program will start March the fourteenth. Pavement repairs are going to take place on Baldwin. That will be a priority that stretch on Baldwin between Walton Boulevard and going out to the highway, which is so bad there by that school. That's going to take place this year and will start in the March timeframe. Also, Jocelyn Telegraph Extension, Elizabeth Lake, and also Beverly will also be done in this twenty-twenty-three year for pavement repairs. CDBG is actually, is actively looking for a DPW space for their department. That still has not been determined. And as far as the recreation, our, our community center that we are working on, we were told that all the surveys that have been done for the, the site that we've chosen have been done. All that work has been complete. And the administration is looking at adjusting the bid for that property. And so there, we still have not finalized that purchase of the property that will be the site of our new community center for the city of Pontiac. I would like to say, though, that as, as chairperson of that committee, I really am kind of concerned that that whole process may be going a little slower than what I would like to see. And I may begin some special meetings to resolve that. So it's so that we're meeting beyond our monthly meetings because I really think we have to move that process forward. And, you know, we just can't afford to let it fall into meeting to meeting. We have to have some meetings to talk about what we're going to do there. So I, I plan to step up that, that process with adding additional meetings just to talk about our community center. That's our, that's the end of my-
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman James. As you can see from the many reports, there's a lot of things that are happening in the city of Pontiac. there's a lot of things that are happening in the city of Pontiac. Our city is definitely rising again like it was before. And I look forward, as these projects come in line, to make sure that our citizens have a great place to not only live, but also to bring their families here, enjoy our new parks, spend vacations here in the city of Pontiac, and get us back to the city that we know that we have been over the years. At this time, we have a special presentation. Pontiac United, presentation of Beyond Martin and Rosa Black History Month Contest Winners. Can we have Tracy Hirsch and Sean Preston?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, residents of Pontiac. My name is Sean Preston, and I'm here on behalf of Pontiac United. Tonight, we are recognizing some extraordinary young people. And as the pastors would say, "I promise we won't be before you guys long."
Oh, I know what that means.
Preach.
Don't get lutz, don't get lutz.
All right. This is our second year doing this Beyond Martin and Rosa Essay Contest, which encourages young people to write essays about other significant African-Americans besides Martin and Rosa. I would like to take a moment to thank our sponsors, the Send Foundation, Urban Air Adventure Park in Oxford, Carol Turpin, and Yak Town Don't Back Down. Without further ado, we would like to ask Kano Phillips to come up here and say something to the youth who are here.
Good evening.
Let's get the energy right in here. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Look, we about to celebrate something absolutely spectacular. We talking about our kids. So I need you to try to get this energy absolutely correct. When we go ahead and make sure we're going to acknowledge these actual contributions that these kids have made through their literary, excuse me, literary writing process. A process that was geared to go ahead and commemorate the power of Black history. Something that is absolutely beyond being forgotten in the classrooms, because you don't even have those type of courses even being presented on the school level anymore. So that's why Tracy Hirsch, that's why you have no idea how important something like this is for this community, to give these kids an outlet. Because for the record, too, I was fortunate enough to be one of the judges for this actual contest. And some of these writings were absolutely spectacular. And you about to go ahead and see some of the ones that are the most spectacular, as they're about to go ahead and get honored here this evening. This is what it should be about. It should not be about us coming together every time you hear a kid being slammed up, you know, against a car somewhere, or being arrested for something that they had no business out here doing, and highlighted all over Channel 2, 4, and 7. We need to have press crews all through here right now to go ahead and celebrate something absolutely positive that's taking place within the walls of this community.
Yes, I agree.
And what makes it even sweeter is that they are our kids. Matter of fact, put your hands together for our kids.
So Pontiac United, Tracy, you and Sean, thank you so much for understanding and getting it. This is what we need to go ahead and do so much more of. And to the true superstars this evening, our winners, words can't express how proud I am. And you know me, I had to go ahead and take a little extra, so I cheated. So I went to, my mother is an English, you know, extraordinaire. Everyone knows that who comes through Pontiac School. So I felt the need to go ahead and slide some of your offerings up across the table to her and see how those came across. And she was absolutely, her jaw hit the floor. And that's what I'm talking about. Look, I may be a hard sell, but she's harder than me, five times harder than me. I know this guy grew up, and she was giving me that business. Ain't that right, Kelfani? So with that being said, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out and helping us celebrate what's about to take place today. To our exceptional kids, thank you so much for taking time out of your day and your month to go ahead and put together those type of offerings. And to you parents who do all the heavy lifting every day with our kids, thank you so much for giving them the type of encouragement they need to be able to do things like this. We need more positivity in this community. And that's what we were able to go ahead and get with this contest. Thank you so much, Pontiac United. And it was an honor. And rest assured, you got me on film now. Every year this contest come up, we will most definitely be sponsoring it. This is what this is about. So thank you, everybody. All right. So each kid will be presented with their prize package of $100 cash, a $25 gift card to go to K-1 Go Carts, a $25 gift card to play in an arcade, a $40 all-day platinum pass to Urban Air, and a free Yak Town Don't Back Down t-shirt. So let's give it up for the kids one more time. All right. So this young man, he also submitted a video of him playing the violin. Give it up for Mr. Drake Scott. Come on, Drake. Come on up here, Drake.
Hi, my name is Drake, and I'm in the sixth grade. And I go to Auburn Hills Christian School. I did my essay on Joseph Henry Douglas. While I was in preschool, I had the opportunity to have violin lessons. I knew that I was making a lot of noise, but not really knew what I was actually doing. About at the age of eight, I was able to try violin again. My mom found a violin instructor to come to our house, and I started to learn to read the notes and learn more about the instrument. After about three lessons, COVID happened, and I could no longer get the violin lessons. I pick up my violin from time to time, but not very often. One day, my mom told me that she found another violin instructor, Miss Stacy. I have learned so much from the few sessions I had. I can read the notes a lot better and a lot more better. And my sounds are now turning into music. I was excited to learn about Mr. Douglas, and because he was the first African-American violinist. I still have ways to go, but practice makes perfect, and I'll never give up. Thank you for this opportunity.
Give it up for Drake one more time.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, guys. We're trying to stay on the time.
You're good. Just continue. You ain't got to rush.
All right. Next, we have Brooklyn, Washington. Give it up for Brooklyn.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Brooklyn. I am in the eighth grade, and I wrote about Claudette Colvin. Claudette Colvin was a 15-year-old girl who refused to give up her seat to a white woman nine months before Rose Parks did. She says that she was moved by a lesson on the Civil War and Black history. She showed me that it doesn't matter your age or color. You deserve to be treated equally. And it doesn't matter your age, you can make a difference. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Kaylee Gracie. One more time for Kaylee Gracie.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kaylee Gracie. I am 14 years old, and I attend Evandale High School. And for my essay, I wrote about John Lewis. And the reason I wrote about him is because I was hoping to inform our community about the amazing task he has fulfilled for our Black community. And as I was writing my essay, I remembered the most famous thing that he has said, getting in good trouble. I didn't quite understand the importance of his words, but now I do at an older age. What he was trying to say was that fighting for what is right is good, even if you get into some trouble. Thank you, Council, and thank you, Pontiac United, for the opportunity to share this important information to the community. God bless, and have an amazing night.
My name is Antonio Marcus. I'm 16 years old, and I'm a sophomore at International Technology Academy. This is a little bit controversial, but against the guidelines of the thing, I chose Dr. Martin Luther King. The reason why I chose Martin Luther King, regardless of the guidelines stating otherwise, is because often when we hear the story of Dr. King, it's told from a perspective that separates his message from his community, ideals, and way of thinking. We, as a community, lose control of his effect, washed away, dumbed down, and misinterpreted to fit a narrative that's easily digestible rather than understandable. With my paper, along with other outlets, I wish for our people to regain control of his narrative and enlighten people outside of our communities on what his words, and furthermore, his messages truly meant and could entail for our society as a whole. I thank Pontiac United and all the sponsors for offering this opportunity to me, and thank all of y'all for listening.
I'm sorry. Councilman McGuinness is presenting voting at 6:40.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Taya. I'm sorry about that. Taya Dinkins-Goldsmith.
Hello, my name is Taya Dinkins-Goldsmith. I'm 18 years old, and I am a senior at the International Technology Academy here in Pontiac. I decided to write my essay about Serena Williams, because I thought her story was a perfect way to show that Black history is a continuous movement, not a stagnant period in time. A lot of times when we talk about Black history, we think of it as past years, past decades. We finish this, it's over, it's done. But it's pretty much the opposite. I wanted to show that Black history is happening now, years from now, and will continue to happen. Serena Williams, the way she pushed tennis, the way she pushed women's issues, her philanthropy, and her modern-day heroics were a great way to demonstrate that. So thank you for giving me the platform.
We had 29 submissions from throughout the city. All runner-ups will be able to attend our private skate party and bring a friend. We will recognize them at the Raladium. All of our youth are winners. So let's give it up for all of the youth. If the council would like to address any of the contestants afterwards, we would love for you guys to take pictures with them and give them some words of encouragement. But thank you to all who participated, and we can't wait until next year. Let's give it up for the young people one more time.
So with that, we'll give council members and the mayor opportunity to offer some brief remarks. We'll file up on this side here. The winners can be on that side. Do a group photo. We'll take a recess for a moment for everyone to leave, so you don't have to feel, you got to stay throughout all the city business. But we ask that when you depart these chambers, if you want to keep talking, keep doing photos, do it on the lower levels, so that way the roar of excitement doesn't spill in through the walls and the doors. Sound good?
Sound great.
All right. Feedback from mayor and council. Who would like the floor? Mayor Grimal?
That was awesome. I'm just really blown away by how impressive each and every one of you are as young people, in two ways. One is the substance of your remarks, very thoughtful, very deliberative, spot-on in terms of your understanding of the importance and significance of these amazing historic leaders. But secondly, just your presentation style, your poise, your confidence, your everything that we really aspire to represent as the community of Pontiac. And all of you make us so incredibly proud. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you for your leadership, even at your age. And I know that each and every one of you will go on to accomplish amazing things throughout the rest of your life. Congrats.
Thank you, Mayor Grimal. Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Thank you, Council President. So in the absence of Councilwoman Rutherford, I just want to highlight that this is why Councilwoman Rutherford continues to tell everyone that the arts are important. Yes, this was language arts, but I have to really focus on the arts part of that. I spent a lifetime in theater. And being able to get up with that poise, as the mayor just said, and deliver these short speeches and excerpts of what it was that they wrote down, takes a lot. And it will take you very, very far in life. And again, I would say that I am an example of that, because just like you, I was in essay contests when I was in high school and middle school. And you can see where it landed me today. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Councilman Goodman.
I think the way I have to start this off is, as Tracy knows, I was also an educator before I got up here. And it's just really warming to me to see so many smart, passionate young people standing in front of me. I think, and a really important thing that I still look at as like from an educator point of view, is that none of you just wrote an essay because it was like, oh, I'm going to write an essay so I can win a contest or a prize. Each and every one of you mentioning your essay, there was personal stake in why you did it. Like, I could hear the passion in which why you chose that person. And it's that type of decision-making, that type of passion that you already have inside of you that shows that you're setting yourselves up already for success. I would like to always say, you know, thank your parents for all these things. But some of that truly does come from inside of you. And I do really want to highlight the fact that many of you, on your own, are powerful, headstrong in a good way, straightforward people who are doing what you believe. It's really good to see, you know, to go with Deputy Mayor said. I, too, was also the kid who wrote essays. I was the person who got up and spoke in front of people for things that I'm doing, and it led me here. And if I made it here, and I can see many of us made it back here, and again, looking at the people who were born and raised in Pontiac, I mean, like, looking at me and Kelfani, I can only see the chances of you guys being able to do great things, not only for this city, but wherever you go. Literally, no matter where you go. And I think that you yourselves deserve a round of applause, not just from the people around you, but from yourselves, because it truly does say something about you to be able to do this. So thank you for coming in today.
Councilwoman Kathleen James.
Yes, I would like to echo my counterparts, that I really enjoyed all of your essays, the little bit that you shared. And what really struck me is the originality of all of your topics. of your topics. They were thoughts that, you know, you don't hear every day. They definitely reflected that you're a very intelligent people, and you, you know, your, your take on this was original, and I really appreciate that. I want to thank you for taking part in this contest and for just being the people that you are. I also want to commend your parents. I can see the pride on their faces, but it takes families to be able to pull this all together. So, I hope before we leave that we're able to get pictures of you with the family that is here with you today, because they play a part, and your community plays a part. As your community, we want to really extend to you our best wishes and for your, your future development. You are well on your way, because as, as Deputy Mayor said, to have those skills, to be able to stand up in front of people and to be able to say what you have to say is, is not easy. It's a huge, huge accomplishment, and I want to congratulate you on that accomplishment. Well, well done. Thank you.
Other discussion on the special presentation. All right, with that, let's do a group photo with the brightest and best, and while we're going up, let's give a hand to the organizers of Pontiac United, who for another dynamic Whoever's behind the cameras, you organize us if you'd like us to stagger better. And tell us who to look at.
Look at me, and on three say Pontiac United. One, two, three. Pontiac United. One more time. One, two, three. Pontiac United.
Okay, we'll make one too.
Round two of the pomp and rhapsody.
That's an iPhone, brother, that's an iPhone.
Hi, everyone, this is Miles Pontiac United. Pontiac United. One more.
Pontiac United.
Round of applause again for our meeting. We now stand at a rest, recess for sixty seconds. That sixty seconds is if you were here to see this part and you wanted to jet, now's the time to jet, so you don't have to stay with all this proceeding.
Don't play with me, don't play, don't play, don't play with my emotions. You know, don't act like you're... This is what this should be all about, celebrating our kids and for them to go ahead and some of those kids, they put their heart into it.
The meeting will resume in thirty seconds. Make your leave if you'd like. Conversations can continue on the main level of City Hall, of course.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I know, I get you. Absolutely. All right, I'll talk to you a little bit though.
The next item of business is the resolution honoring the accomplishments of wrestler Adam Polk. Could we please have Coach Polk and the coaching staff to the microphone to queue us up for this celebration and about the big developments for our Pontiac zone? All right, sir, you have the microphone. Tell us about this milestone. We have two resolutions this evening, first for Mr. Polk and then for Mr. Thomas. You can talk about them individually or jointly if you'd like. The city council after you present, and we can have the, the young men also give remarks. The city council will offer feedback. For this presentation, though, we are going to then vote on the city council resolution, and then we'll present you with the resolution and photographs can be done there if that sounds, sounds good. So with that, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, giving us this opportunity to be here today, council members. Also, we want to thank the Pontiac School District for their support, also our athletic director, Craig Covington, for his support today being here. We got two unique athletes in our city right now that needs to be really highly recognized on a bigger stage, bigger level at some time, maybe a summer event or something like that, a parade. Adam Polk and Corey Thomas Jr. are our top wrestlers in the state of Michigan, are top city wrestlers right now. Adam was two thousand twenty-one freshman state champion. That's the first freshman state champion that Pontiac ever had, has had in this city. And once upon a time, there were no ninth grade. Ninth grade was in middle school, so a lot of you probably remember that. However, now, you know, seventies, eighties, nineties, two thousand, we have never had a freshman in no sport, no sport in seventy years of athletics in Pontiac School District, and we have our first here in the city today. That's Adam Polk standing over in the corner waving a little bit. And, and secondly, our current state champion this year, thirty-two and O, undefeated, Corey Thomas Jr., state champion. That's two state champions in the last two years in Pontiac. They both, they both, they both started in a youth wrestling program with the Pontiac Junior Huskies and came up together in the ranks all the way to high school. I always told them when they were kids, it's one more kid, he's not here. However, I told them when they were kids that I will retire when they graduate from high school, and, and I told them they were my dream team, that I always wanted, and here it is. I'm coaching them today, and they both are state champions. Look, it's, it's a little emotional for me, so I had to try to keep myself together, you know, but I'm proud of, I'm proud of these young men for doing what they doing for the city, and, you know, academically, you know, these guys stand up in the classroom, you know, you should see them around the school. They are real leaders in the school, somebody you would want to be escorted around the school with as a visitor. You know, going on and on, I really want to mention about the history of wrestling real quick. You know, the history of wrestling started in the fifties. Coach Bill Wilson moved here from Illinois and started wrestling at Pontiac Central. And then as Pontiac Northern was being built in the fifties, nineteen fifty-seven, fifty-eight, when it was built, Bill Wilson transferred over to Pontiac Northern and built a powerhouse wrestling program. Nineteen sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, some of those years, Bill Wilson was the state champion wrestling team in this area, one of the biggest wrestling programs, you know, around the nation at one time. And here it is today, you know, you know, living off of Bill Wilson, you know, we still making champions in the wrestling room. And these guys like Corey, Corey is an All-American, outside of all state, All-American is, you wrestling the best of the best in the country. Okay, so, but this just is a great honor to be here, familiar faces, Mr. Carrington, Mr. Parker over there, these guys have been knowing me a long time, and they know I've been in wrestling over twenty years, coaching in this city, and we have had some of the best wrestlers in this city, around the state, here today, but really, really want to make sure that focus is on Adam and Corey right now. They have done an exceptional job for us in our wrestling program and our school district lifts us up in all ways, in all different directions. So, right now, just want to have these guys come up real quick. Mr. Covington, you got any words you want to say real quick, anything?
How you doing, Craig Covington, athletic director? And this is a great gift for me, as I just took this job in August. So, you know, I'm, I'm proud of both of them, I see them in the hallways, and it's bigger than wrestling, because they're both our three-point-four, three-point-five students. So, I'd just like to say thank you. But the, the best part about it is, both of them will have a choice of college where they want to go to, because they're both are receiving scholarship offers. But most importantly, they can come back next year and do it again, because they're both juniors. So, I'd like to have Corey Thomas Jr. and Adam Polk Jr. to come up and have a word
First off, I want to start off by thanking God, thanking my family, thanking my coaches, thanking Pontiac School District, thanking the athletic director, and thanking my teammates. I wouldn't have really done a lot of things without them, so I just want to thank them
I'd like to thank everybody too. Growing up little in the, in the wrestling room, I started when I was about three or four, and it's been my main sport up until now, and still will be going off into college and stuff like that. Yeah, it's just been, it's been a dream, it's been a long time coming. It's, being a high school state champ is a big award, and I'm really grateful that I was able to do that in a Pontiac singlet, so, yeah.
Feedback and comments from mayor and council. President Pro Tem Carrington.
Can I say something?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I would like to thank the parents that are here, Mr. Corey Thomas Senior, the father and the mother, they are here, and Coach Polk, who's coaching his son, so I'd like to thank them.
Thank you for that. Pro Tem Carrington.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. I am so happy for you guys and someone that loves sports. When I was a trustee, the first day I came up, I came up to the wrestling area where they was practicing, and Coach Polk said, we got one of the greatest wrestling programs in the state of Michigan, and he has shown me that. To have such a small team with so much fight as they go into these invitationals, and it's an honor to sit here at this table to offer these two young men resolutions, because they deserve it. They deserve it. I see them training in the morning, running up and down Perry Street, because that's the best district, the sixth district. But I see these young men training and putting, and putting the work in. And I, and for all the sports programs at Pontiac High, I can say that wrestling team really, really puts the work in, and the result is fabulous. You know, it's a long history of wrestling champions in the city of Pontiac, and these guys continue to push the envelope, and we definitely happy and proud of you guys.
Thank you. Other city council, mayor feedback? Mayor Grimal.
This is really, really impressive, especially doing this as, as juniors, and I, I know I don't need to tell you this, but, but for everyone who's watching, being a great athlete is about a lot more than just raw talent or ability. It's about discipline and hard work, and so these accomplishments really speak to your character and who you are, and obviously that also shines through in terms of both of you being well-rounded. As your coach said, you're doing well in school in terms of your academics as well, and so I just tip my hat to you. I have tremendous respect for both of you, and really, you know, I speak for everyone in the city of Pontiac when I say we're incredibly proud of you, so keep up the amazing work.
Amen. And because of what you've accomplished, when we have our Black History Month installations at Pontiac City Hall and at our senior community centers throughout the city of Pontiac, you have already made history. You are already history makers, and your pictures will be displayed every year in the halls of the city of Pontiac. But what's really powerful, just like the Olympic gold medalists and state champions of various different competitions and, and sports and fields, that it doesn't stop necessarily with these accomplishments, that you get to keep going and applying those, those, that strong character that Mayor Grimal spoke to. We want to be able to celebrate you for the history that you make and the amazing lives that you lead and the happiness you get to unlock for yourselves in every chapter of your life, when it comes to family, your career, your home, and we certainly hope that you make Pontiac your forever home, but even if that's not the case, you are forever a part of Pontiac, and I'm really grateful that, Mr. Thomas, you made that point, that these accomplishments were made wearing the Pontiac colors and representing our community, and we are so proud and grateful for that. You've made history, we are, we welcome and rap and celebrate that history, but we want to keep celebrating you, so keep going. As Max May would say, keep going, because there's so much more that you can accomplish. Keep pursuing all that interests you, all that is of interest to you, and keep pushing yourself, because you've already proven to yourself, the community, and the whole state of Michigan what you're made of. God bless you all. So with that, any other feedback? With that, we're going to have, can I please have a motion to adopt the resolution honoring the accomplishments of wrestler Adam Polk?
Move by Carrington.
Support. It's been moved by President Pro Tem Carrington and supported by Councilman Parker. Pro Tem Carrington will read the resolution that he helped put together.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Pontiac City Council Resolution Honoring the Accomplishments of Adam Polk. Whereas, it is the sense of this legislative body to honor an outstanding young adult, remarkable character, who is inspirational and who serves as a role model to others. And whereas, Adam Polk has a unique distinction and privilege of becoming the first athlete at Pontiac High School to place in the Michigan High School Scholaristic Association, Athletic Association State Finals three years in a row, after winning the two thousand twenty-one MHSSAA State Championship, one hundred and twenty pounds, as a freshman. And whereas, Adam Polk in his sophomore season placed fourth in the Michigan High School Athletic Association State Finals, and in his junior season placed third in the state finals. And whereas, Adam Polk is a Pontiac resident, attends Pontiac High School, and is coached by his father, Adam Polk, and assistant coach, Taylor Everson. And whereas, Adam Polk's talent did not go unrecognized, as both his parents, Adam and Monica Polk, were eagerly committed and devoted to his development as a, as a consequence. His father studied the sport and became indoctrinated in wrestling, ultimately becoming his primary coach. And whereas... And whereas, Adam Polk is an exceptional and accomplished wrestler who was taught to never be selfish and to maintain great sportsmanship-like conduct at all times. And whereas, Adam Polk's other accomplishments include Oakland County runner-up in 2021, champion in 2022 and '23, and 2021 All MHSSAA Dream Team Selection, and the 2023 Division Two Michigan Grappler All Junior Team Selection. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Pontiac City Council and the members of this great community honor and salute the personal accomplishments and achievements of Adam Polk for a job well done, for truly representing the city of Pontiac. Congratulations, Pontiac City Council and Administration.
Right. That motion is before us. Could I please have Roll Call Deputy Clerk Grandison?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted and these words are forever etched in the history of the city of Pontiac. So, 1,000 years from now, they can look back in the minutes and know what you've accomplished forevermore. God bless you. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution honoring the accomplishments of wrestler Corey Thomas Jr.?
Move by Carrington.
Support. It's been moved by President Pro Tem Carrington, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. That motion is now before us. President Pro Tem Carrington, could you please read the resolution that you put together?
Thank you, President McGinnis. Pontiac City Council Resolution Honoring the Accomplishments of Corey Thomas Jr. Whereas, it is the sense of this legislative body to honor outstanding young adult remarkable character who is inspirational and who serves as a role model to others. And whereas, Corey Thomas Jr. has a unique distinction and privilege of becoming the Pontiac High School Phoenix State Champion and the Michigan High School Scholarly Association State Finals after winning the 2023 MHSSAA State Championship at 157 pounds. And whereas, Corey Thomas Jr. is in his sophomore season placed third in the MHSSA State Finals while attending Nobod Detroit Catholic Central. And whereas, Corey Thompson Jr. is a Pontiac resident, attends Pontiac High School and is coached by Adam Polk and assistant coach Tyler Everson. And whereas, Corey Thompson Jr.'s has supportive parents, Corian and Leanna Thomas, who are Corey's junior's number-one fans. And whereas, Corey Thomas Jr. is an exceptional and accomplished wrestler who has laser focus and who maintains great sportsmanship-like conduct at all times. Whereas, Corey Thompson Jr.'s other accomplishments include Oakland County Champion in 2023 and 2022 Grappler Fall Classic All-American and the 2023 Division Two Michigan Grappler All Junior Team Selection. Now, and therefore, it be resolved that the Pontiac City Council and members of this great community honor and salute the personal accomplishments and achievements of Corey Thomas Jr. for a job well done and for truly representing the city of Pontiac. Congratulations, Pontiac City Council and Administration. Thank you.
Here in your free discussion, Roll Call adoption of that resolution, Deputy Clerk.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Mr. Thomas, your commendation and recognition by this public body is forever etched in the public record for the centuries to come. Congratulations again. Now, what we'll do is some group photos, do a very brief recess, rinse, lather, and repeat. Sound good? Let's do it. We can do this, both gentlemen and all the coaches at once, and then we can do solo athletes, solo actors. That be your preference?
I am.
Here is your report. Tell us, Director Bridges, if you need us to move or modify our stances.
One, two. Nope, you guys are perfect. What a perfect picture. I love it. One, two, three. Thank you.
Now, if you'd like to do one with Mr. Thomas in the group and then one with Mr. Polk in the group, in case you needed for your scrap, we'll never hear it if you say that. And if you'd like to take the phone from her so mom can be in the picture. And if you'd like to take the phone from her so mom can be in the picture.
All right. One, two, three.
Round of applause for the Thomas family. All right, we stand at recess for the next 30 seconds. So, if anyone would like to make their leave now, you are certainly welcome to. Congratulations again to this evening's recognized champions.
Let's just remain standing so Mike doesn't.
Before we begin, we'd like to give a standard ovation to President McGinnis for being honored by Oakland County. Forty, is it forty and forty or forty and under?
Forty and under forty.
Forty and under forty.
He made it by a couple days.
Congratulations!
Thank you very much, yes. So, that's why I was a few minutes late for this, beginning of this evening's meeting for, the Oakland County Executive is giving his state-of-the-county address in West Bloomfield tonight, so they had the reception for the forty and forty winners. Thank you, that was very, very thoughtful. We resume now with our agenda. We're at recognition of elected officials. I don't believe I see any current city officials, elected officials, that wish to have the floor. So, now we are moving on to agenda address. And Pro Tem Carrington, are there any requests for agenda address tonight?
Yes, President McGinnis. We have Mrs. Norman Elam, I mean, sorry, Mr. Norman Elam.
And Mrs. Andet. You want to hit the microphone, little button on the bottom right there. Thank you.
To President McGinnis, Pro Tem Carrington, Council, and the Mayor. About, we're dealing with the 11th Genitive, I believe it is. What we want to say is with the buffer that was put in place, the 500-foot, now from the back of my building on Woodward, you would have to go down a lower embankment to the railroad tracks, which is a double railroad track, then up an embankment to the back of Eastern Oil, where there's a 10-foot, I think, eight- or 10-foot brick wall. From there, down that wall into the, between storage tanks, and then a parking lot, and then their front yard, and then cross Paddock Street, and then there's a church. And I don't know about you, but I don't know nobody trying to get the church that bad. You see? So, we're asked that if you put it back on Woodward, going down Woodward to Prospect, you would run into a church, Reverend Parker's Church. Then down, if you cross the street of Paddock, you run into West Church. If you go down, you run into Christ Temple, going south on Paddock. And then you run into, I guess, Galilean Church or something like that. There's enough churches there. But the barrier that you put in place would eliminate us, and we want to be included. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elam.
Mr. Calton Jones.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I wanted to speak about something that was brought up last meeting, a couple items. One, I could relate to Councilman Pro Tem Carrington having some passion about history, the historic knowledge here in Pontiac. And I know we got a lot of new faces coming on as employees, people on council, but people and residents here who have invested in this city, we're relying upon some of the historic knowledge to be in place. Another thing that Councilwoman James spoke of last week, she talked about a master plan. And I think they go hand in hand. And I'm gonna tell you now what we have a tendency to do because of our, right now we got committees, and we got all these committees, but we've got to include citizens with history in these committees. We get citizens with history in these committees, then we can be responsible. Because what happens over and over is that a reaction when there's a big change. Last week, when Stone Gate people came down here, they were reacting, and I would react the same way. I had no idea what was going on over there, but I went and checked it out, and I see why they was down here. But we have to really, truly take this historic knowledge of our city, and this is not pointing at anybody, because I realized we had to go through a change. We didn't have employees before working for us. But they have to take some time and understand the historic knowledge of this city. Because I'm gonna tell you right now, I bought in over at the golf course. The golf course is up for sale. When I bought in over there, I thought it was gonna be a golf course. It's now talking about possibly being some residential property made over there, so I'm very concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Delia Sharp. I'm standing here with Denise Harris, and we are the executive staff of Identify Your Dream. Our organization provides grief support for young people impacted by violence. Our mentoring program is in its fifth year. We currently have about 16 participants who we call Dreamers, where we meet every other Thursday, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. in the Healing Hearts office. We have been in the community almost 15 years, and although it's unfortunate that we, that a program like ours exists, but as a survivor myself, both Denise and I lost brothers to violence in this community, and we definitely see a need to continue to provide our support completely free for our families. We are here to invite the community to our fifth annual Strike Out Violence Bowling fundraiser happening this Sunday, March 19th, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Tickets are $25, which includes three hours of unlimited bowling, two slices of pizza, and a soft drink. A portion of your ticket will go back into IDYD's programming, specifically our 13th Stump Out Violence March and Rally this Memorial Day. More details will be shared once confirmed. See Denise Harris tonight for tickets. Thank you all for your support. See you Sunday. Let's all have fun as a city that prioritizes healing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quincy Stewart?
A worthy endeavor indeed. I'm here on item 47 with the Pontiac cleanup. As the president of the Crestwood-Asterwood Block Club, our cleanup usually is in May, but we're now going to align it with the Pontiac City cleanup. One of my concerns is, is there an alternative day? Because now, we're talking about April, and you live in Michigan, we all do, and we know April can be a really iffy month. I've seen it snow in April, and I've seen some really horrific weather in April, ice storms of that nature. So, it's not a hard sell to come up with an alternative date. You might want to consider that so that when, if the cleanup doesn't happen, you'll have ample time or at least have some alternative dates on the literature that you send out so that people will know that you won't have to be in a rush if something happens. Now, you got to send out some kind of bulk mail or try to let people know. Come up with an alternative date now. Put it on the literature so that if it rains or goes bad, we all know that it's going to be on an alternative date. So, that's my concern with that. And I was going, I have to leave, the meeting is too long with the marijuana stuff. I was going to talk about Harold Harris, a good friend of mine, so I'll come and talk about him next week. I had a nice speech about him, but I'll give it next week because the meeting's too long. Thank you.
If you'd like, we could do that as a special presentation next week, too.
Thank you. Dr. Deirdre Waterman?
I'm speaking about 11, 2, 13, and 37, however much time I have, but since we had such a dramatic presentation, wonderful, of the young people from our community who are rewarded and are achieving so much, I want to start with numbers 37. And that is a scholarship opportunity that's being offered, particularly, and I'm here to talk about the fact that it's eligible for all Pontiac students, whether residents or whether going to Pontiac schools. And because the deadline for this is coming up March 27th in a couple weeks, I want to make sure that this word got out. This is being sponsored by a group called The Links Incorporated, of which I have been a charter member. They have been active in Pontiac for 40 years and did other such things such as help save the library, you know? They were the ones who got funding to build a children's reading room in our library and helped to support the early inroads when that was going to be closed and helped get that message passed so that we could save this library for the city of Pontiac, for the students and the residents. But the scholarship, up to $2,000. We do have returning students. You do have to be either a senior or a college freshman or sophomore, and the applications are all done online, and that's at www oaklandcountylinks.org. And that's links with a S, L-I-N-K-S. Or you can call me or email me at drdeirdrewaterman@gmail.com. Doctor is D-R, and then my name at gmail.com. But we want to make sure this opportunity is available to our students, and we're so proud of the people who are coming out of Pontiac, and that's what the students are doing with our students, exemplified by the ones that we saw here for this presentation. We're very proud of that and want to support that.
Thank you, Dr. Waterman. Ms. Jean Jalinski?
Good evening. I'd like to congratulate all of the amazing kids that were here tonight, receiving recognition for accomplishments and jobs well done. I'm here to talk about the cannabis ordinance that's up for discussion tonight. And I'd just like to take a moment to remind Council that you are the voice of the people. You are the legislators, not the Planning Commission, not the administration. You're the final stop. The buck stops with you. You are the voice of the people, and if something doesn't seem right in these discussions, ask. If you don't feel that you're getting a whole answer or don't understand the answer, continue asking the question until you're satisfied. In the ordinance, we currently have M1, M2 zoning that's required- that's required to be abutting a property within the Woodward overlay. This also knocks out applicants that have been awarded a conditional license for medical marijuana operation. I, I am also not aware of any other municipality in this state, and I've been doing this for seven years, that has a separate zoning ordinance for adult use than they do for medical marijuana. It's, it, it's perplexing. I also would, since two thousand eighteen, have been involved in the city of Pontiac's discussions. And I've seen all the, all the developments, all the, all the applications that have come through. And I am also aware of a lot of the litigation that has unfolded from the medical ordinance. I would find it very curious, and I frankly would like to know, how much the city of Pontiac has spent on litigation over the medical ordinances that are in place. And use that as a barometer, maybe to consider what you're doing with the adult use ordinance to move forward. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Rosalyn Northcross.
Good evening. I'm Rosalyn Northcross, and I'm addressing the Adult Use Marijuana Business Ordinance. My home is within earshot of the Woodward corridor. Your decision on the adult use of marijuana business ordinance will directly affect the quality of my life, as well as the rest of the residents in Woodward Estates. We want to see a requirement for communications between the retail marijuana establishments and the neighborhoods mandated, not optional. We want to see this for both the initial, as well as one-year renewal applications. We want to see language that says, "There shall be communications with residents, not there should be." Who better to monitor the impact of these establishments, um, and, uh, impact on the neighborhood than the residents of the neighborhoods themselves? So please, consider a change in the language. There shall be, not there should be. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Chris Northcross.
Chris Northcross, one-six-eight Asterwood, Pontiac. Uh, Honorable Mayor, esteemed Council members, and fellow citizens, good evening. First, I ask the ordinance to amend the city of Pontiac zoning ordinance to include adult marijuana business use with overlays, as recommended by the Planning Commission, be approved by this city council. Verbatim. Second, uh, in regards to the adult use marijuana business use ordinance, I ask the business application process be revised to require a neighborhood communication plan, and, and the license renewal process be revised to require evaluation of the performance of the business in carrying out their neighborhood communication plan. And lastly, I want to say, "Go Phoenix," very proud of those young men. Also, the folks that, uh, came forward with their essays and their comments, excellent, excellent, excellent. That's what really makes the city, it's determined by how well it develops its young people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chuck Johnson. He's not here. Uh, President McGinnis, that concludes our agenda address.
All right, we are now at number eleven. Is there a motion, uh, uh, for adoption of an ordinance, uh, the second reading, to amend the city of Pontiac zoning ordinance to include adult use marijuana businesses in designated overlay districts, and amend Appendix B of the municipal code of the city of Pontiac, commending Article Two, Section two-point-one-zero-three zoning map to create four adult use marijuana overlay districts located in the city of Pontiac, specifically to be known as follows: Adult Use Marijuana East Walton Overlay District, Adult Use Marijuana Caesar Chavez Overlay District, Adult Use Marijuana Downtown Overlay District, and Adult Use Marijuana Woodward Gateway Overlay District. So moved. Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Goodman, for the adoption of this ordinance, uh, to amend, uh, the city of Pontiac zoning ordinance. As, uh, just itemized, uh, this is our second reading. It was for a first we, reading last week. Um, and so since it's an ordinance amendment, it requires two readings, uh, at least. And so that is what we are accomplishing tonight. We give the floor now to the administration for any overview presentation. But as discussed last week, um, amendments that the city council wished to see were essentially collated and prepared, so that way they were legally strong, so we have that litany of items. This is specifically relates to the zoning ordinance, both map and text. So that's what we'll be delving into. And then following that is, um, the next, uh, continuation of the, the broader topic, but a separate ordinance, which is the Adult Use Marijuana Business Ordinance that has previously been discussed. So with that, hopefully I've set the table all right. Give the floor to the administration to give us some staff perspective on where we're at, um, prior to us delving into the, um, item-by-item changes that city council members have individually wanted to bring to the table for full council consideration. You have the floor, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll yield to Planning Manager Mark Yandrick. I know he gave a very in-depth presentation last week, but I think he probably would like to touch on some, some of the, uh, items that he touched on last week.
Good evening, Council. Uh, welcome again. Um, I just have a very brief presentation. I just want to state for the record, I do have all the slides from last week in the bullpen, if anything needs reference, but I, I have about ten, twelve slides here, um, just to go through real quick. And as it was passed out, um, there are two options, uh, for the Woodward Gateway Overlay District that the city council asked to consider. While it was distributed, it was missed from the packet, it was removed with something else. So we apologize about that. So, um, just to update the public on the timeline of where this is at. Last week was the first reading. Uh, tonight is the motions to amend. There will need to be a second reading, uh, with a clean ordinance at a later date, so. Um, and this, uh, amend, uh, text and map amendment is for nine, uh, la, uh, adult use marijuana, uh, land uses that are listed up there. Anywhere from designated consumption lounges, grower facilities, micro businesses, processors, retailers, social equity retailers, safety compliance establishments, secure transporters, and temporary marijuana events.
Could you go back to that, actually?
I'd love to.
I just wanna, because we've been dealing with so many considerations, it might be lost for some residents. So what we're talking about is adult use marijuana. Uh, some of these on these numerical listing, one through nine, are an option for medical marijuana in the city of Pontiac, with certain zoning designations. Uh, but there are more now with the adult use, um, expand sort of this next phase for adult use. So for example, number one, designated consumption lounges for adult use or recreational marijuana, that's a new offering. And so what this zoning amendment before us, it spells out where that can happen, how that can happen. Same with, for example, these micro businesses, temporary marijuana events. These are the, this is the guts that puts in the structure that protects the residents, protects the property owners, make sure that, yes, per the law, this can happen. This is the direction we want to go in, but with appropriate safeguards and appropriate space in terms of where in the land use in our city. So that's important. It's sort of baked into the cake, because we've been discussing it for a few months, but this is, this is a change for the city.
And if I may add, there's just a few other changes for medical marijuana. A provisioning center is a medical marijuana retailer, but it's actually called a provisioning center through the state. But in this adult use ordinance, it's called either a retailer or social equity retailer. So we're just making sure we align, uh, with the state law on adult use, or recreational marijuana. So, um, continuing on, um, the city council has asked to consider, uh, the following motions to amend. The boundary of the Woodward overlay district, um, to allow five adult use retail uses per overlay district, to allow one adult use social equity retail use per overlay district. And both of those are changes from what was presented last week. Uh, number four is to amend the buffer distance calculations to match the requirements of medical marijuana. And number five is to, uh, remove the proposed requirement that the Woodward overlay district properties need to be adjacent to M-one and M-two properties. So I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things here. This is the chart, uh, that was viewed last week, just identifying the designation and the number of each use per overlay district. So what, um, city council is considering tonight, um, is, on some of these that are in red, and, um, right here, is to allow five uses evenly throughout all the overlay districts. Uh, and this would, this would allow two additional regular retailers in the city, as from eighteen to twenty. And then at the bottom, for social equity retailers, this would be Uniform One for each overlay district. And, uh, previously, what was proposed was six, uh, social equity retailers in the city, and this would be reduced to four. Um, continuing on, this is the map that was presented last week for the Woodward overlay district. Um, just for orientation purpose, this is South Boulevard at the bottom here. Uh, and this is, uh, Rapid and Turk Street up here, uh, where the fish market is. So the area in green was what was proposed previously. Now, city council this evening would, has asked to consider two options. And I know this is a, a very large map. Um, they, uh, within, uh, their direction last week, they, uh, requested to consider the Woodward overlay district all the way down to Nebraska Avenue, which is, um, just on the north side of the Trinity Hospital. So that is located right here. This is South Boulevard. And then they're wishing that every property, uh, their request to consider is every property, um, on Woodward up to Uron Street, on, uh, expe, including where Uron splits, would be included in this. Now, uh, what's on the inside of the Woodward loop is already in the downtown overlay district, so that does not need to be included with these regulations. But it is everything north of the split on the outside of the Woodward loop. So alternatively, um, going to the next slide, um, there's a consideration for that same map, just without the, what I, I like to call the right, uh, wishbone. And that would be, uh, the northbound, uh, what's excluded from this are the properties that are, uh, abutting the, the northbound Woodward after the split, or north of the split. So as you can see here, this starts at Uron on the southbound, um, goes down to the split where northbound and southbound, uh, diverge, and it, it is on both sides of the street beyond there, so. And then as part of that, um, just for analysis, I know there's a lot of colors, there's a lot of data up here. Uh, but this map just helps, uh, city council identify the zoning districts that are here. And, and one of the things that is mentioned is the M-one and M-two zoning districts. And, um, with, the, the M-one districts go up to Orchard Lake on the, um, left side of this map. Um, and then they are obviously in the locations here around Rapid and Turk. Um, and then, uh, to the southeast area of the district, um, north of South Boulevard. Um, I wanted to identify, uh, the motion to amend for the buffer calculation. Um, I know there was a motion made by city council in January. Um, but this is the, the language, uh, that is included in your motion, uh, tonight. And it says that the distance between the s- school, childcare center, public park, religious institution, or contemplated location shall be measured along the center line of the street or streets of address between two fixed points on the center line, determined, determined by projecting straight lines at right angles to the center line from the primary point of ingress to the school, childcare center, or religious institution, residential dwelling unit, or the playground equipment in a public park, or from the primary point of ingress to the adult use marijuana business along the center line to the primary street, uh, address building entrance. And then item C is more procedural. It just says if a parcel lot, um, does not meet the minimum buffer distance, uh, the use shall be prohibited at that location, so. So, uh, again, these are, uh, that is my presentation this evening. Um, these are the requests, um, and everything else is in your packet. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, city council, uh, we can have discussion first, or, and then go into amendments. And so I imagine the discussion would not delve into the amendments, per se. We can talk about those, um, consideration by consideration. But I see a hand from Councilman Nicholson.
Yeah, I'd like the, a city attorney to approach the dais, please. We heard from Mr. Northcross on the Planning Commission with an interest in wanting to, the council to move forward with, um, their wishes as, uh, we asked for their recommendation. If the zoning, um, uh, if the zoning amendments, uh, if we don't, if we don't consider any of these zoning amendments, and we pass exactly what the Planning Commission off, offered up to us.
Yes.
Does the city attorney have any concerns in defending the city's interests based on our ability to plan and zone?
With regard to passing what the Planning Commission recommended?
Correct. If we, if we deny all of these, these amendments.
Yes. No, I don't have any concerns, yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion broadly before we go amendment by amendment?
Yes.
Protem Carrington.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. I actually just wanted to, uh, actually, uh, if the planning, the, the planning director can come back to the podium. Explain a special exemption, uh, to me a little better, so I can better understand, um. It's, you stated that a special exemption are classified as having unique characteristics where the planning commission reviews a site plan with consideration for the impact to a surrounding neighborhood. And I, and is this something that you, that was added just to these, this particular ordinance? Because I'm kind of confused. It seemed like the planning commission should be doing that anyway. So I'm trying to understand the difference.
So, um, with that, um, that has been in the ordinance since we started this in December. Um, and it is something, I believe, of a policy thing that is different than medical marijuana. And a special exception is like a special land use, and it's, in some, uh, instances, it's called a conditional use where planning commission gets to review that, uh, to see if there is any negative impact. If something is, is potentially next to a school, and it's within five hundred feet, uh, maybe it's outside the five hundred foot buffer, or the thousand foot buffer. Um, and, but they might be near each other geographically. That, it gives planning commission the ability to put a, added conditions in there. It, it, it allows them to review to protect the health, uh, welfare, safety, aesthetics, um, for that particular use. And that, that is proposed, um, as I mentioned last week, it's proposed in all adult use marijuana businesses, um, except for temporary marijuana events.
And, and, and this wasn't, uh, this wasn't, uh, part of the, the medical marijuana?
It was not at all.
Okay.
So.
So my other question is, is that when it comes to other zoning around the city outside of this particular business, are, are, are the planning commission asking for the same special exemptions so that it gives them the same opportunity to, um, uh, look at the surrounding neighborhood? Because I, I guess, I'm a little, I guess I'm a little concerned that the planning commission is not doing this anyway. So I just not understanding why we need a special exemption. It's something that we should be doing as a planning commission already.
Uh, we have certain land uses for certain zoning districts that our, our land use chart requi, requires a special exception. So we, we often, we've seen several this year already, that it's not a, uh, and this goes with state statute. It's not a given right that every type of business will fit well within that. Um, bars are examples, uh, statewide, that some zoning districts, it's a special exception to make sure that that is appropriate in that location, to not impact the neighboring properties. They don't, it's not a ban on bars in that zoning district. But that's an example of things that the city and, and other, uh, other cities may regulate as a special exception use.
My, I follow a question, President McGinnis. Uh, the other question, for example, if we can, if we leave this here, does this come back to the city if, um, when it comes to, uh, some of these approvals? Just say, uh, it, a person couldn't get through the, the planning commission. Uh, will they be able to appeal to, uh, the council to make a decision concerning this particular, uh, land use?
Uh, may I, uh, ask our attorney just to, to speak on that with the appeal process for a special exception?
In the case of the, uh, special land use or special exception, that's decided by the planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
I think he might give a fine, a follow-up update. Anything further to offer on that, Attorney Kelly? Okay. Uh, so, Councilwoman James?
I'd like a clarification on the amend the buffer, the distance, because I thought the language that you showed in your presentation, I thought we had already addressed that in terms of, uh, looking at park equipment rather than the park itself.
Okay. So the question would be?
We'd already amended that language, so I'm kind of wondering why this is back in there that, uh, we are looking at playground equipment in a public park.
Versus an entrance to a public park?
Yes.
I think what tonight is doing with both the zoning ordinance and the business license is aligning it. And, and so this language is verbatim from there. Uh, but I think we can take a look at the motion that was made at a previous city council meeting with the business license, to make sure that that aligns, uh, okay.
Mayor Granville.
This language is not the existing language in the business ordinance. The business ordinance language was amended in January. Uh, and I believe, uh, Mr. Murphy sent you that document that amends this to- you that document that amends this to take out the phrase, "or from the playground equipment in a public park," is my understanding. Mr. Murphy can probably speak to that, but I know that as you sought to make sure that there was consistency, Mr. Murphy reached out to you via email and cited the amendment that was made in January. So, Mr. Murphy, maybe you should speak to your understanding of where that landed, but my recollection is that it was amended so that in the case of public parks, it was from the boundary of the park, not from the playground equipment in the park. And I think that's what Councilwoman James is driving at.
Yes.
Correct. There was a motion by Councilwoman James to eliminate the measuring factor of playground equipment because of an example where playground equipment disappeared overnight in one of the parks. And it's also an issue where many of the parks are going to be renovated and playground equipment may be moved. So the council voted to approve that amendment to eliminate the measuring factor of playground equipment versus the entrance to the park being the measuring factor. And that was put in the business ordinance. The council wasn't addressing the zoning ordinance at that time.
So are we going to amend the zoning ordinance to comply with what we currently have in the business ordinance?
So there's, there's two changes afoot. One is about how we measure the buffers...
Yeah.
Because the business ordinance right now isn't aligning where we want to be.
No.
And so we want to tweak the zoning and the business language so that way it talks about the buffer measurement. And our understanding is that per the amendments already adopted, at least the business ordinance removes the playground equipment X factor, and so we may add a future amendment so that way we don't necessarily workshop it incorrectly, that that could be a follow-up amendment that we do that mirrors the two when it comes to removing playground equipment. So it's just about the park location, not about playground equipment.
The business ordinance, too, does not address residential dwelling units. It just addresses the other controlled uses: childcare centers, schools, religion, religious institutions, and I think that's, and parks, but not residential dwelling units.
Is there any language in the business ordinance that speaks to residential dwelling units, or that's only zoning text and map?
There's nothing about residential units in the business ordinance.
Okay, so we'll keep that to the zoning text and map. Okay.
All right. Any broader questions before we go amendment by amendment? Deputy Mayor Stevens?
Councilman Carrington, did you get satisfactory answer to your question about special exemptions?
Yes, I'm fine. Thank you. Councilman Nicholson?
Yeah, about special exemptions, and City Planner, tell me if I'm off on this. I know there's been some talk and some, and I asked in the last meeting about setback requirements. I know there are setback requirements outside of the overlay districts for things like growers and processors, but the retail, it doesn't have that there. So for those that have been concerned about these provisional, provisioning centers abutting residential properties, could a special exemption be in a process that the Planning Commission could take to remedy some of those things that they feel could be dangerous or worrisome?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Good point. Councilman James?
I have a question, is where is the special exemption in our package? Because I missed that. I did not see that.
So the special exception is located in Table 2.2, and that is where you see the rings, and I'll show it on the chart here. And at the bottom of Table 2.2 in your packet, it actually mentions that those rings are actually special exception uses. And there, we have an entire section about special exception within the zoning ordinance. I tried to summarize within the presentation last week, but if you need any more information, please let me know.
But where is the explanation of special exception talked about in your document?
Memo.
Did you provide that for us?
I did provide a memo for last week's council meeting. I did not provide one for this one, and I do not recall if that's in there or not. I apologize, so...
I get the sense that council members, because we're going to be making with our amendments some pretty substantial changes, that we don't have to feel forced to do our final vote for consideration for these two ordinances. So that gives us a final week for the community to see what the final changes are, for the council to do final research and review, and for us to do some final cleanup amendments as needed, as the attorneys give it its 14th, 15th review, to make sure if there's any fly words or phrases. But so special exemptions, that's something that the Planning Commission, it comes up otherwise, it basically gives the scenario where it says, because it meets that classification, it must come before the Planning Commission.
That is correct.
It's not something that staff could review solely, or it's something that is automatically granted. It's basically giving it a higher threshold, saying that the community, the public, the citizens, have that final and further review of that. Can you see, spell out what the special exemption is talking about? Is it about site plan? Is it about...
So a special exception, you would actually show the site plan, the intensity of the use, and that is reviewed in a very similar way to the site plan, but it's reviewed in a different lens. And so, and I also mentioned last week, most applicants are going to be able to hear their special exception and their site plan at the same meeting, so it should not delay any process for an applicant to move forward with approvals.
Councilman James?
But what, my question is, a special exemption, is that for an applicant that is borderline being over what the, the buffer is, or right on the buffer, or slightly over the buffer? How does special exemption become, you know, come in?
Absolutely. So that is a process that every adult-use marijuana will need to go through, and Planning Commission will assess, you know, if a site does not negatively impact the neighboring properties' traffic in a significant way, there may not be, it may just be an approval. But there are instances with the special land use that Planning Commission has the authority to impose conditions of approval, or to evaluate if this is the best location for that property.
Deputy Mayor?
So just to try and make this a little simpler, and then if, yeah, Attorney Murphy, if, Kelly, if you would like to verify what I'm about to say. Generally speaking, however a property is zoned, it's zoned, and as long as an applicant brings forth a site plan that meets that zoning requirement, the Planning Commission is obligated to approve that use. If you have a special exception permit, or if your, if your item requires a special land use permit, what it does is it overrides that automatic approval, so that the Planning Commission has to look at it and has the ability to say, yes, even though the underlying zoning would normally allow this activity, for whatever reason, we, the Planning Commission, believe that this activity is not appropriate in this space. Is that a fair...
Yeah, excellent summary. The only thing that might be missing is the special land use or special exceptions is laid out in a separate ordinance, so the standards are not set forth in the marijuana ordinance, and those standards are the same for whatever special land use, special exception is applied for. So that was, I believe, the planner provided at last meeting, you indicated. So we could do that again if necessary. Councilman James?
I'm still somewhat confused as to, because what was said was every one of these requests or every one of these businesses are going to have to, you know, get, go through the special assessment process. You know, it doesn't, it's not, and now Deputy Mayor says that, you know, the Planning Commission is under an obligation, if that person or if that entity has met all of the qualifications, they are under, you know, the obligation to approve that submission. But what I heard him say was, all of these are going to come under the scrutiny of special exception, which to me is very, it allows them a tremendous amount of discretion. And if that discretion is going to be exercised for every single one of these businesses, I guess I'm struggling with that. I'm really struggling with that.
Deputy Mayor Stevens?
Thank you, Council President. So to clarify, without the special land use, the, the Planning Commission would be obligated to approve any item that came before them that met the requirements that were laid out. With the special exemption or special land use requirement, the Planning Commission can then say, even though the underlying would normally obligate us to approve this, we can now look at these other factors to make sure that this is in fact an activity that we would like to see at this site. So the, the land, the, what we're talking about is giving the Planning Commission added ability and not being beholden to say, well, you checked all the boxes, so we have to approve.
And the only thing that I would add to that is that special land use does have standards. It's first laid out in the Michigan Enabling Act, which is the zoning act for the state, but there are standards, there's years of case law that interprets what standards can be upheld and what cannot be upheld, and so there, it's not like it's just completely at the discretion of the Planning Commission. I would also point out that most of the marijuana ordinances that I'm familiar with, and that's quite a few, always provide for a special land use as a final review process by the Planning Commission, for whatever that's worth. Councilman Goodman?
I mean, the way that I'm understanding this, like, to remove this special land use would kind of put us in a situation where we're, well, treating dispensaries and the like very similar to how we treat liquor stores and dollar stores in the city, and that is the parallel that I'm coming across here. If we were to remove the Planning Commission's ability to actually choose and delineate between these different, these different organizations and dispensaries, would that be a fair, simple understanding in, in removing that special land use ability?
So under our current zoning code, anything, any business that has, that their primary use is packaged alcohol beverages, whether it's beer, whether it's liquor, it is, requires a special land use in the city. So what is being proposed tonight for the adult-use marijuana is the exact same process.
And so I, from the months, and oh, really now, almost two years sitting up, well, it's, time goes by fast. And the amount of time I've been sitting up here, also not just up here, but previous to this, it seems like we have had multiple discussions about, again, as a council, as a city, about our concerns with marijuana. Concerns that I do not share in the same, in the same vein or similar fashion, but I've heard the many concerns about how people are, in some ways, afraid of, or at least want to greatly curb the possible negative influence or perceived negative influence of marijuana. And we have this discussion about, you know, trying to keep it out of the neighborhoods and trying to do all these things to essentially protect the sanctity of our city, but then now we're having a discussion about possibly removing our city's ability to choose and delineate between what is a good participant in this industry and what is a negative one. And I, I see just a general problem with that. If we are able to regulate alcohol in a similar fashion, I don't know why we would further remove our city's ability to sit here and again, make the decisions between what is a good and bad participant in this, in this industry, especially when we're trying to do it for everything else. We have those moments of trying to curb things, but then want to be laissez-faire in the very next sentence in a way that sometimes doesn't make very clear sense. So in saying all that, is there any reason in which you believe we should remove that special land use for, for this ordinance?
I think it's a smart reason to keep it, in my professional opinion.
And I guess to ask the attorneys both behind you, do either of them see any reason for us to remove the Planning Commission's ability to utilize what is laid out in front of them with the special land use?
No, I would, I'm not concerned with it. It's something that's pretty standard in most ordinances. It is within the discretion of the City Council, but I'm comfortable with the fact that it's not so vague that it's not enforceable by both the applicants and the, and the city.
And then to Attorney Murphy, would you also say that there is, is there any good reason for us to remove that ability from our city and from our Planning Commission to do so?
No, I concur with Mr. Kelly that it's a standard procedure and a set of factors that we're familiar with. I've done well over 100 municipal applications that have been granted, and I've never had a situation where we haven't had to get a special land use approval as part of the site plan review by a Planning Commission.
And would you say that, and getting a answer to this, in keeping it or removing it, does it, would you say hurt our chances at all when it comes to bringing in marijuana businesses into the city of Pontiac?
No, they're all used to going through the special land use process, and it gives the city more control over what the use is going to look like and how it's going to be buffered and what kind of landscaping it will have, et cetera, and what impact it will have on the surrounding neighborhood. So it, it just gives you that extra level of control, and it, and you can send, send it back and say, you've got to make these changes in order to get approval to meet these factors.
And the very last question I have is, do either of you know any city in the state of Michigan who does not currently utilize that ability through a special land use or a special exemption?
Not off the top of my head, but there's probably a few out there. I mean, I've seen some ordinances that are three pages long, and you apply and you get approved that day, and then you start your, your build-out after you get site plan approval. There's a few cities like that.
In your opinion, as an attorney who has worked through multiple of these ordinances, would you say that, as people roll in their eyes, any of the ordinances that you would perceive as, you know, having standards or a solid integrity, do you feel that any of them do not have that special exemption requirement in there?
No, I think most, like I said, almost all of the cities I've dealt with have that requirement in their zoning ordinance, and they, they view cannabis as a controlled use that needs to go through that process.
Thank you.
President, I'm sorry, Councilman Parker for a first time.
Thank you, brother. So basically, the special exception says that the Planning Commission gets to look at it in each case individually and decide.
Absolutely. And if I may add, this is the only chance the city has for a public hearing for these marijuana uses, and that is really important for the surrounding properties, whether it's a residential or commercial, to provide that input to a city board for consideration. So that's why the, why special exception is important for the city, not just for marijuana.
Councilman Nicholson for a second time, then Pro Tem Carrington for a second time.
So to me, the consistent, you know, the consistency is what I, really makes me sort of furrow my brow. One of the first planning and zoning issues that we had come before this council was a dollar store, Dollar General, and Baldwin. And we, we grilled them for an hour about how we didn't like this and that we thought we could, we wished we could make other decisions and, and help guide this process, yet we talk about with this industry, for some reason, this industry in particular, we want to remove all of these barriers and loopholes and scrutinies, yet in every other, we, we spend, you know, all this time scrutinizing. So, you know, to me, I think that that is something to be really, it makes me confused about why. Why, why does this industry, why do we want to treat them any differently? So to me, to take away the public hearing opportunity, to take away a appointed board of citizens' opportunity to ask questions in front of the community, if someone were to come to me and say, I have a problem with a dispensary in my neighborhood, I would say, I will have to say, take it up with the people who voted to get rid of your opportunity to speak about this. So to me, and it's, because it's not going to be me. I'm not going to be somebody who takes away that opportunity.
Pro Tem Carrington for a second time?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Actually, I think there's been some good points made concerning this particular, or item. For me, I definitely want to see consistency. If you look at our city, I don't see no consistency in some of these things getting approved, whether it's a liquor store, because I know, for example, they didn't take any special consideration in some of those liquor stores, they, they dropped these communities in the city. So my issue is that if it's going to be there, that it be consistently done throughout the city and every... the city and every neighborhood. And this, and my second item is that I haven't saw any consistency in the last 12 years I've been in the city. So, that is my main concern, is that consistency has not happened. And then, too, I see a Planning Commission that is able to show me consistency, then I'm all, I'm on board, everything they're saying, but I've been at these Planning Commissions way before I ran for public office, and I've seen issues with a lot of things that was coming out of the Planning Commission. So, please forgive me if I have some concerns about this particular board of citizens. I'm sorry, but I definitely understand that, as a council, we do want consistency, and we do want to make sure that if we give, we give our boards the opportunity to make sure they protect our community, and that's really where I'm at. I want the community protected, but I definitely want it to be done consistently, regardless of the person's name, how much money they got, and who they know in City Hall. Thank you.
All right. Any discussion before we start doing amendments?
I just wanted to say that I, it sounds like we have the assumption that somebody is against it. I'm not against it. I do not understand it as well as I need to understand it to approve it. So, hopefully, as our president said, you know, we may have to wait until next week because I need to study this more, I need to fully understand what special exemption permit really means. And so, at this time, I'm not against it. I think certainly it sounds like it could be useful to us, but we, I need to fully understand what the, you know, just what the extent of it is, because to me, it's, it sounds, you know, there could be some issues there. So, I'd like to understand it a little more, not against it, not for it, but I am saying that as a councilperson who is responsible to know what they're voting on, I do not understand special exemption permits as well as I need to understand it. Okay? All right.
Councilman Nicholson?
Okay, so, I think it's our responsibility as councilpeople to educate ourselves in the process of municipal government, but that's just me. I don't show up here unprepared on a regular basis or confused on a regular basis. However, if any of us have any concern over who is on a board or commission, I would beg you to please ask your residents to fill out applications on a regular basis. I'm hearing that we have no one applying for many of these seats. So, please, 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 I mean, if there is somebody that you don't, you don't think is the right person, talk to the administration, talk about that, and offer alternatives. Because right now, I, I mean, I ask every single person I can in my district, and that's, if you look at those appointments, you'll see there are a lot of active people in District Two, and it's not because there's favorites or special deals that are going on, it's because they're the only ones that keep applying. So, make your applications, encourage your residents to do it. It's just unfair. It's unfair to these people here that show up every night expecting us to make decisions, to come in and say, "I don't get it, I'm unprepared," when we get this packet that has all of this information in it and we have time to ask questions.
Councilman Goodman? Any further discussion before we move to amendments? All right. So, when it comes to the Woodward Overlay District, there is a Woodward Gateway Overlay District boundaries as recommended by the Planning Commission. Council members have expressed various options for how they would like to see those boundaries potentially amended. We have two maps with two sort of summary descriptions that were discussed by council members at the meeting and in between the meeting, and expressed to me that they would like to see these amendments considered. My understanding is that 1B, in this document that we have for motions for City Council consideration, that this is the map amendment that council members would like to first consider. So, I want to confirm that that's...
Yeah.
I was going to say, what they just passed out, both have option A on both sides. So, just so, I don't want to confuse...
Option B is on the screen.
Okay, 4A, 4, okay, all right.
So, that'll be our delineation. So, in this summary here, the Woodward Gateway, for 1B, the Woodward Gateway Overlay District shall begin at Huron Street on the southbound side of Woodward Avenue and continue south for parcels on the western side to where northbound and southbound Woodward merge into one road, comma, where it continues along both sides of Woodward Avenue and at Nebraska Avenue. That is not language identical to this suggested language, that's, I've wordsmithed that to make it more clear about the layout, but that would correspond with the map before you, map number four, Adult Use Marijuana Woodward Avenue Overlay District map. So, if you want to, it's what's up on the screen right now. It would expand the boundaries from the current Woodward Gateway Overlay District, so that way, if we're starting north and going down at Huron and southbound Woodward for the western side of the street, it continues all the way down to where north and southbound Woodward begin two-way traffic, essentially at the tip of the loop for those, for common parlance, continue on both sides of Woodward Avenue until it gets to Nebraska Avenue, as outlined. Is there, Councilwoman James, would you move to amend? Is that your motion?
Yes, it is, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. So, it's been moved by Councilwoman James and seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington for amending Article 3.1207.D. and amend Appendix B, Overlay District number four, and it would essentially be expanding the boundaries of the Woodward Gateway Overlay District as the map and as that verbal summary provided. So, now that we have that before us, the administration and staff prepared that for it because a council member identified they were looking to see that prepared, so we've got the appropriate language and parcel maps before us. Before we have deliberation on this amendment before us, is there any staff feedback you want to give us on the footprint here?
I have nothing additional, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman James, any further thought? You shared last week a little bit about the rationale, but anything further since you've made the motion as we deliberate on whether we want to, as a council, make this change? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I do still support this change. We had investigated to see as, looking at the option B of looking at both sides, both east and west of that, of the Woodward Loop at Huron, we considered that, took a look at that. I also requested to get some information about the Woodward Loop conversion that's going to be taking place within the next couple of years in that area, to kind of see what that area would look like after the conversion, but I don't think it's going to make that much of a difference. This is basically what we would like to see for the recreational marijuana proposal.
All right. Any further discussion about the Woodward Gateway Overlay District? And, Councilman Goodman?
So, I am against this amendment. I firmly believe that we should entrust the Planning Commissioners, in which I, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, we as a council voted to appoint. I believe that we appoint citizens to participate in government in a way in which we also participate in government, and I do not want to get into the active precedent of going against the decisions that citizens who we have voted to appoint have made because we don't fully agree with it. Now, be it, I understand making changes and amendments as so, but the fact that we started making amendments before the original presentation was even done, when there was a recommendation from the Planning Commission of people who we voted to have be there. So, I very much support the original, the original plan from the Planning Commission when it comes to the makeup of this overlay district, because I believe and trust in the decision that they made in limiting its size and keeping it where it was originally.
Any further discussion? Pro Tem Carrington?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. It's kind of interesting, when we don't support something, that we say we should just trust the process. Oh, but I know, I know, for example, that things have come from the Planning Commission that we actually voted and added things to it, that we didn't actually take that recommendation. Again, I believe in a fair process. We have a right as council to adopt, make changes, and improve anything that comes in front of council. We have that obligation to do it. So, I don't, I want to make anybody feel bad because they support or don't support something. That's your right as well, too. So, we all have that right. But I do know that things have come from the Planning Commission, and we have adopted, changed, and accept, with, from the same board, and this is no different.
Do you have a hand for a first time, Councilman Nicholson?
No.
Okay. Councilman Goodman for a second time?
Not to create a back-and-forth, I fully do understand that, and in my original comment, I did mention that, yes, it is our job to look at things and analyze them. However, if, before we even got to the end of the presentation that was given, that was, the proposal that was given to us by the Planning Commission, we were already setting pieces on the chopping room floor, I don't think that that is a great start before we even, again, originally got to it. And again, if, by my own reading of what was proposed to us, I firmly believe that that is the best decision. Now, be it, we are allowed to change and amend that. I fully encourage every one of my colleagues to do that. That is what a legislative body is supposed to do. However, I do think that there is some issue with the fact that the first meeting which was presented, we began to chop bits and pieces off of it immediately, before even hearing the entirety of the plan, from people who we asked to do a job to also be deliberative in the same way for this specific subject as we are. That is all I am trying to say.
Any further discussion on the amendment before us?
I do know.
Okay, Councilman Nicholson?
Yeah, I want to concur. I want to say that it seemed to me that we shouldn't have waited around and deliberated this so much if we didn't, you know, I mean, not to say that we shouldn't, whatever we get back, we still have to consider, and I think that there are some, certainly some things that we need to consider and probably some things we need to tweak. But I felt very similarly that that conversation started, and there were things that were written down. I mean, I heard conversations happening of things that were already agreed to and, you know, before the information had been really given to us. So, I know for a fact that those things were, we weren't waiting for that decision. We had ideas of what we wanted. I had ideas of what I wanted, and I wasn't one that really kept wanting to kick the can down the road, but to kick the can down the road, to get their opinion, to then now, you know, make the decisions that we already sort of had canned, you know, I find offensive, but...
Point of information to clarify, you're not stating that there was a quorum of City Council members deliberating?
No, no, absolutely not. It was a conversation between two individuals, not a quorum.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment before us? Is that a beginning of a hand, Councilman Parker?
Well, yeah.
Okay, Councilman Parker, microphone?
Yes, sir, I just, as I'm looking, I'm just trying to determine, once I get past a certain point on this map, what actually can I put on Woodward Avenue? Because if I know, as I drive up it, I don't see a whole lot that's on either side that's available to put, from what I can see. And we've been at this since December, discussing overlays and things and this marijuana thing, and so I'm just curious, and we delayed it for months while the Planning Commission, we said, was going to decide some pieces of this, and now that they've decided the pieces that we asked them to decide, I keep hearing, but they didn't go my way, so let's do something different. I understand portions of it, but I don't understand all of it when I look at it. If we voted for the people and elected the people or put them in positions, certainly I would think the same thing applies with us. They put us in position, we're supposed to make a good decision on the business at hand, but we also have to depend on the people who we also put in position, because they are supposed to be the experts, is what we don't understand about various things. None of us are experts sitting here. So, as I look at it, and I'm sitting here, and I drive up Woodward all the time because I'm going back and forth to church, does it make a difference if we extend it? I don't know that it does or doesn't really, when you look at it. I don't know who owns all this property, I really don't. So, does, what, what is the benefit of making the adjustment, other than just expanding the space? That's my question. What is the benefit of making the adjustment, other than just expanding the space?
So, there are, I don't know the number of parcels of either vacant land or currently developed land, be it vacant buildings or presently occupied buildings, but there are many dozens of parcels that are in this proposed extended footprint. In the context of marijuana businesses, we know that there are conditionally-approved medical marijuana applicants that would be located in this expanded footprint, so we know that there is the prospect of marijuana-related businesses that may be able to use those properties, vacant buildings, et cetera. I find that on the western side of southbound Woodward Avenue, there are many either vacant, underutilized buildings that were, you know, constructed either 100 years ago or 70 years ago, but there's also a lot of vacant land, and so I'm interested in seeing, through the conversion project with the Michigan Department of Transportation, stimulation of development on both sides of Woodward Avenue, including the Loop, but not limited to the Loop, and so I think that there is a possibility that the expanding of this footprint may stimulate redevelopment of what has not seen as much investment or growth in the last at least 50 years on that southbound western side of Woodward Avenue. That, not exclusively, you know, originally, there was some concept of the eastern side of northbound Woodward, but that includes Lighthouse of Oakland County, St. Vincent de Paul Church, the Pontiac City Hall, the School District Administration Building, the Sheriff Substation, across the street from the library. It has much more civic center, municipal center, so I think this is a smarter compromise. But, you know, there are also some properties between South Boulevard and Nebraska Avenue on the westbound side that are currently vacant or underutilized or sold from their current use. That's the thing, we are setting essentially the parameters, there's no guarantee where the top applicants will be. Our next amendment will say, how many are we even willing to put in this Woodward Gateway District? Is it three? Is it five? It's a different number. But, so, this essentially expands the possible footprint. The current Woodward Gateway Overlay District that staff had prepared and the Planning Commission recommended to go forward with is much more compact, and there's also that boundary, there's the buffering issue that's going to be considered, and does it have to be neighboring M1 and M2, you know, manufacturing? So, that's really, really tightly constrained. So, this is one possible way to create more expanded parameters for where prospective adult-use retailers could go, but there is no guarantee that any will fall in, depending on where the points score out, et cetera, and the special exemption process, all that, about where it goes, but it does expand what's possible, what possible applicants may be submitted.
Yeah.
Councilman James?
And to the question about that the Planning Commission, that we are going against the Planning Commission, I really don't think that is a problem. I think that the Planning Commission, we sent this to the Planning Commission for their evaluation and input, and they did an excellent job in sending it back to us with a decision. I don't think we are under any obligation to do exactly what they asked us to do. I think as a City Council, as elected officials, we have a responsibility to make sure that what we decide to do is we're doing what is right in our own minds, and we have to be able to make our own decisions about this, and we have to be able to stand up for our own decisions, because we're going to face the electorate in three years. So, we are accountable for the decisions we make up here, just as the Planning Commission is accountable. I have every respect for the Planning Commission, I have extremely close friends on the Planning Commission, but I am not required to do everything the Planning Commission has recommended. I have to take what they have recommended and... and evaluate it for myself and make some kind of a decision as to whether I think this is what we should go with or whether what they have recommended should be amended. That's my right as a councilperson. And I don't, I'm not going to apologize for that. I don't think that it's anything against the Planning Commission itself, but it's my right as a councilperson to evaluate what they have done and to make my own decision, which is what I've done.
Councilman Goodman?
So it, it seems like my, the accent that comes along with my youth may mean that we're speaking a somewhat different language, in which I am saying, all of us have the ability to critically think about this ordinance. That is not what I am saying. No part of what I am saying is asking us to approve anything without deliberating on it because in a simple word, that would be stupid. That would be a derelict of duty to not critically analyze the things in which are given to us. That is not what I am asking of any of us. What I am asking is that if we have, let's say, hired a city engineer to do city engineering, and the city engineer says that something should be done, it would behoove us to sit there and allow the city engineer to use their expertise on the issue, to explain to us, you know, what it is that they have decided to do, what they have brought forth to us and why those things are a good idea. And if we have recommendations and changes, we can do that as we are utilizing the knowledge from said person. However, and to bring it back to my original concern, is the fact that before the presentation from the planning director about what was the recommendation from the Planning Commission was even completed, before he could even finish his idea from point A to point B in a full, complete way without us adding in our own amendments, it shows in some way that we were not fully listening and taking in the information to then be able to make said amendments. There is no problem with amendments. As a person who loves to make changes and make things better because that's inherently what we are supposed to do as a legislative body, is be deliberative. I want us to be deliberative in a way that is fair and responsible and in a way that makes sense because again, we have put people in positions to do a job, the same way that people have put us here to do a job, for us to be deliberative. That way, when they hear that these decisions have been made, they can also say, hey, I may not fully know the answer, but the person who I voted for, I believe that they can do the job that I, I hired them to do because elections are hiring, the same way in which we have appointed people to do these jobs. I am in no way saying that we should not make changes and make things better from a document that we are given. That, again, would be not smart. But what I want us to do is to be able to at least maybe trust the people who we have put in a position to be able to give us what I think would be good, valuable, sound advice for us to at least begin the basis on, to move forward, and not, again, start putting it on the chopping room floor before they have even had the chance to explain to us the proceed, the process that they want to have laid out in front of us. The, the, it just, it, it kind of baffles me just a little bit.
Okay, as Planning Commission liaison, you can see the transcript of the Planning Commission meeting. The statute requires that a zoning map or zoning tax amendment must have public hearing and have a recommendation from the Planning Commission. That was done. Planning Commission has specific requirements about how frequently they meet, the notice that they have to post for these changes they can consider. I asked the question during the meeting, when's the appro, the best, most effective time for us to consider whether we need or want changes to the footprint to the Woodward Gateway Overlay District? As the transcript will show, the planning manager offered, it would be extremely difficult for us to compile those parcels on the fly at that particular meeting. We could have said, let's wait another month and come back with a different, you know, op, option for a recommendation of the Planning Commission. That would have just pushed that recommendation back either two weeks or a month. And that did not seem most feasible. So I shut up, kept my mouth closed, and said, all right, we've got what we have. The staff put this before us. This allows us to keep the conversation going. You can see the transcript of the Planning Commission a, as a result. If, if that is the wish of this body, that only the Planning Commission should be making any changes to that, the Planning Commission doesn't meet weekly like we do. So it, there are some, some functional changes that would be, that need to be made. I mean, not that we're too often having these kind of very complex matters, but I just want to raise that procedurally for the Planning Commission meets, usually once a month. Sometimes we'll do special meetings, but that, that creates a higher burden or threshold. But I wanted to offer that up. There were, there were five members of the Planning Commission there at that meeting. One requested to and was voted to recuse themselves for that matter. So there was a, a recommendation for the four attendees who were still voting. Three, one in favor of, of this map. No changes to the boundaries were considered because it was not realistic procedurally for us to consider it there when it comes to the question of which one. So I just want to offer that for context, doesn't change what, anything, anyone said. I just want to offer that for perspective procedurally in case it comes up from the Planning Commission question for us in the future. So we have an amendment before us. The amendment that's been moved is, do we want to expand the footprint for the Woodward Gateway Overlay District? Right now, the ordinance before us has a smaller footprint. Planning Manager Yandrick, are you able to go to where the current, what the current boundary shows? What the language is right now? That's right here. So this is the current language in the adult-use marijuana zoning and tax amendment. This is the Woodward Gateway Overlay District as it's, the language presently stands. The amendment proposal is taking, if it, it's favorable, it expands the, the length. Is everyone clear on the amendment before us?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any further debate on it? During no further debate, Madam Deputy Clerk, we're at this particular amendment. Roll call on the adoption of the amendment to Article 3.1207D and amend Appendix B Overlay District Number Four. And its map for Option A is the visual, for those that are following along. And the Woodward Gateway Overlay District shall begin at Huron Street on the southbound side of Woodward Avenue and continue on for the parcels on western side of, to where northbound and southbound Woodward merge into one road, comma, where it continues along both sides of Woodward Avenue and ends at Nebraska Avenue. So, that's where we're at. Sounds like everyone's clear on what the vote is before us. Roll call on this particular amendment when it comes to proposed map boundary changes for the Woodward Gateway Overlay District. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
No.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Mr. President, four yeas, two nays.
Okay, so that amendment passes. So the zoning, tax, and map amendment before us incorporates that changes. Now we are at the next requested amendment for consideration. Amend Section 2.303, Table 2.1. Amended as follows, so that a maximum of five adult-use marijuana retailers shall be allowed in each of the overlay districts. Pro Tem Carrington, you raised this item last week. Do you still wish to make this amendment?
Uh, yes, um, yes.
Okay. So it's been moved by Carrington. Is there a second? Support? Okay. It's been moved by Carrington, seconded by Goodman, that would change the number of adult-use marijuana retailers to a maximum of five in each of the four overlay districts. I imagine we're all clear on what four overlay districts we're talking about? Right now, the language, and Planning Manager Yandrick, if you want to pull up the 2.1 that shows where we're talking about at the tally, that right now, it, what staff had incorporated into the initial proposal was six for East Walton and? Okay. So six for East Walton, five for Cesar Chavez, five for Downtown, and two for Woodward Gateway, for a total of 18. Because that was the initial number that, that council had deliberated on as we've been considering the business ordinance. This amendment that's proposed would take that total number from 18 up to 20, and they would be five in each of them. So did I, did I capture that correctly, Planning Manager Yandrick? So this is the language that's currently in there for this table in terms of the distribution. And the, the amendment before us right now changes that distribution, increases the overall, and then changes the distribution, 5-5, 5-5. So that's what's currently before us. Pro Tem Carrington, any rationale you'd like to offer?
Uh, yes. This is, this was done in combination of the social equity retailer. I was trying to make sure that we have equal representation in each district as well as decrease some of the number. I know s, some folks felt that we had too many, too many retailers, period. So I wanted to actually re, re, have equal representation throughout each district as well as reduce the number of social, social equity retailers as well. So it was done in combination of, of both of these amendments.
Okay. And the next amendment will deal with the social equity retailers' number and distribution as well. So what we're talking about are the pros and cons of changing the total number from 18 to 20 and the pros and cons of distributing it based on, you know, what's being affiliated for each of these districts. Right now, it's six, five, five, and two. That's the current language, the current number, the current distribution. The amendment before us now makes it five, 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 and five. Is there any other deliberation, how people feel? Councilman, I almost said pro tem. Councilman Goodman?
Uh, to Planning Director Yandrick, I do have a question. And this may not be anything that you can answer immediately based on the, the recently passed amendment. Was there, I, correct me if my assumption is wrong, but I'm assuming that when the Planning Commission gave us the recommendation that there were the, the smaller number of retailers in the Woodward Overlay as recommended was due to its size, correct?
Its size and also the direction from city council based on not wanting a cluster from one of the motions that were made probably back in January, so.
Thank you. So with that, based on the overlay that, as we, as passed currently, would you say that the overlay district is comparable in size to the other three that already exist?
It's probably, while there may not be as much parcels, if you look at the geography, it's obviously spread out over a long corridor of Woodward. So i, it's comparable in size. So in fact, it's longer than what Downtown is.
So to, to ask a, I guess, a more pointed question, in, in your capacity as planning director, do you, do you have any thoughts to offer on this amendment using your expertise in terms of this, this number, I guess, realignment, as, again, as it pertains to the Woodward Gateway District?
I do not have any specific analysis or thoughts related to, to five for this, for this district, so.
Uh, that ends my questions for now.
And I, I don't necessarily see the benefit in having six for the East Walton. So even if this amend, particular amendment fails, I would encourage us to, you know, that basically a compromise to this follow-up would be that we move from six down to five and move it up from two up to three, at, at least for sort of the redistribution. But right now, what we have before us is 5-5, 5-5, makes 20 overall for retailers and adult-use marijuana. Further deliberations, pros and cons? Should we do it? Should we not?
I have a question.
Councilman Parker?
Maybe you could ask this question for me. Does this also include the, the possibility of the, the caretaker's role that's also in, maybe in that?
So the caretakers in the ordinance are restricted to the base zoning districts. A little, it's a little bit different than the overlay districts. And they're, they're, it, it's proposed to only be allowed in the M1 and IP1 zoning districts. Now, there are a few places that then may land in an overlay district, but it, it would not count towards a retailer because a caregiver is a different land use than any of the nine that are being proposed this evening for adult use.
So you say that they should be, and they, like, as example, Woodward overlay, they shouldn't be, I'm sorry.
Woodward overlay, that shouldn't be not in the Woodward overlay?
It's very unlikely because I think there might only be one property that I'm aware of that is zoned M1. As we talked about in that map, there are a lot of land uses, ja, ja, land uses that are adjacent to the Woodward Gateway Overlay, Overlay District that are M1. But I don't, I, there may not be more than one property that's on Woodward that is zoned industrial. So, and if it's one, it's a odd one, so.
And so the, the number of retailers won't be impacting microbusinesses, won't be impacting caregivers, that, that quota, if you will, or that, that, that ceiling, that limit, that's specifically talking about retailers?
That is correct.
Further discussion, pros, cons? Councilman Goodman?
So just to make sure that I am voting with the full picture here for myself. When it comes to retailers, both the normal ones and social equity, what, what does the, what is the zoning requirement for them to be able to open? Is it M1? Or C3?
For Woodward or for any overlay district? For Woodward?
For Woodward.
Um, how it's currently proposed is the property has to be adjacent to an M1 or M2 zoning district.
And so, oh, continue, I'm sorry. No, continue, I'm sorry, I apologize.
And the reason for that was just to give some buffer to residential neighbors. If you're adjacent to an M1 zoning district, you're likely not adjacent to a residential neighbor because of that.
And so, excuse my poor vision, but when you get into essentially where the loop begins to separate, are, is everything that is marked in green an M1 or no? Well, everything that is, I kind of encapsulated.
Yeah. That is the proposed Woodward, everything that is in green. So when you're, and that's all the way down to the top to the bottom of the map. It's, you can see the adjacent land uses. And the grays are the M1s, if that helps you read that.
And so the reason why I'm asking that question is, I guess, after the divergence of Woodward, how many of those properties that are directionally north of that, how many of those are actually M1? Or M1 adjacent?
Within the Woodward Gateway District, none. And I think the most, it's, most of them are C3 zoning district, which is commercial corridor.
And so realistically, the, any retailers that are opened in the Woodward Overlay would be further south where there are more M1 zonings, correct?
Well, the, when you go north, let me bring up the highlighter here.
Yeah, that'd be very helpful.
This, these properties right here up to Orchard Lake, the way it is written in our ordinance, if you're adjacent to the railroad, you're still adjacent to the zoning district on the other side of it. And so these properties from the diversion up to Orchard Lake are adjacent to M1 for the lands that are west of, west of that overlay district.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
There is an amendment that is being proposed that would remove that language, of course, but the current language is there. So I can't, I can't ascertain yet if that will include or not. So I don't want council members to feel rushed on the question of 5-5-5-5 or some other distribution. If you feel like that's the final question you'd like more research on, so I, I will informally ask right now, are council members comfortable with making their decision? And where do you even land? Do you want, you know, do you want them all to be even? Do you want to be more surgical with, with how they're distributed across the overlay districts? Anyone got any guidance for me? I just don't want to force you to vote on it if you, you still are marinating on the, the policy impact. Councilman Goodman?
Personally, I, I would like to see like some possible further deliberation on this in terms of the distribution on it.
Any further discussion? Councilman James?
Okay.
I, 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 you know, hearing what the, the reasoning was before in the redistribution, there was a, it seemed like there was a lot of data and thought to it. Now with the redistribution of the overlay, I, I, I think if you, if the planner will tell us that there might, that might change the original idea of the distribution, I, I think more time is, 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 is okay. But if not, then no.
Yeah, so the recommendation that staff had in the forging of these sort of dispersment of the figures is based upon the gateway district footprint?
We heard a lot about Cesar Chavez, yeah, that, that was a concern.
Councilman Parker?
I'd like to give a little bit further discussion myself, personally.
Well, how about this? How about we withdraw this amendment? Because I can't really table this amendment, you know what I'm talking about? So, I want to keep going on the other amendments. So, that was made by Pro Tem Carrington. Are you willing to withdraw your amendment at this time?
Yes, I withdraw.
And it was seconded, I believe, by you?
Correct, I withdraw.
It's withdrawn by the mover and the seconder, Councilman Goodman. So, now what we're at is the question of social equity retailers. Do we want to wait on, before we move on that, it might be sort of in concert with that?
Yes, I'd rather wait on that as well.
Okay, so, let's deliberate and research on that further. Now, the question is, is there still an interest from council members to move to amend Section 2.303 of Table 2.1, to say that a maximum of one... Oh, I'm sorry, scratch that, my brain and my eyes. Number four, amend Section 2.553.1 Subsection 2, Subsection D, amended as follows, that marijuana facilities in the Woodward Gateway Overlay District need not be adjacent to the M1 or M2 zoning districts. Which council member would like to make that amendment to remove the M1 and M2 requirement? So, that, on the screen, is number five. On the right up, it's number four. But, so if you're looking at that, we're talking about the number five amendment, removing the proposed requirement that Woodward property needs to be adjacent to M1 or M2.
I have a point, I have a question before I decide whether I'd make the amendment. So, I think maybe it was new information that on the other side of the railroad would still qualify. So, I wonder if that idea or that question is, has been answered, if that soothes that problem?
Last week, that was part...
Was there another concern?
Yeah, it was beyond that.
Okay.
But, so if we want to do more research, because now we're looking at more parcels, so if you want to before next week, see which M1 and M2 neighboring designation we've got, or do you feel comfortable, it's been deliberated last week as well, is there any council member that wants to make that motion still about removing the adjacent M1 or M2?
I'd like to know who, whose amendment was that?
Actually, it came up in a general discussion, no one specific council member, so I had staff prepare it in anticipation that a council member was going to move it, but if he ain't moving it, he ain't moving it. Councilman Parker?
But we did say, I think he said earlier, that what happens across the street makes the whole street valid, right?
The railroad tracks.
Right.
It's the...
The railroad track.
The railroad, not the street.
Okay.
All right, so not hearing a move in a second, let's move to the buffer distance restrictions. This would be Section 3.1208, buffer distance restrictions. The... The language that we have before us, I want to make sure I'm reading what... Okay, motion to amend for the buffer calculation, that in bold on the screen here, it would read, "Such distance between the school, childcare center, public park, or religious institution and the contemplated location shall be measured along the center line of the street or streets of address between two fixed points on the center line determined by projecting straight lines at right angles to the center line from the primary point of ingress to the school, comma, childcare center, comma, or religious institution, comma, residential dwelling unit, or from the entrance to a public park, comma, and from the primary point of ingress to the adult-use marijuana business along the center line to the primary street address building entrance, period." You'll notice instead of "from the playground equipment in the public park," I stated, "from the entrance to a public park." To try in on the fly, make it mirror what the amendment did in the business ordinance already, but we can have that there needs to be a final word or two tweaked, we'll have attorneys research that, and that might be a final amendment we make. Is there a council member that still wishes to make this motion to amend the buffer calculation?
Move by Carrington?
Support.
It's been moved by Carrington, seconded by Nicholson, that we amend this language when it comes to buffer distance restrictions in 3.1208. We've discussed it last week, we've discussed it in some presentations already, thank you, staff. Any further deliberation from council? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call on adoption of this amendment as it relates to 3.1208 buffer distance restrictions and the buffer calculation.
James?
Yes.
Excuse me. McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The amendment passes. The main zoning amendment ordinance fun stuff will reflect that accordingly. So, we've dealt with the boundary of the Woodward Overlay District. We have said we want to research and deliberate further on the distribution of adult-use retailer and social equity, and will deliberate further on removing proposed requirement for the Woodward property needs to be adjacent to M1 or M2. We're back to the main motion, the zoning amendment as amended. Deputy Mayor Stevens?
Just on what you would like further information on, it's items three and four, correct?
Well, from that visual from the planning staff, we're still talking, we haven't made a, rendered a verdict on numbers two, three, and five. Five adult-use retail, or, you know, some other distribution of the adult-use retail totals per overlay district, the social equity retailers per district, and whether or not we want to remove the proposed requirement for the Woodward property needs to be adjacent to M1 or M2. I'll also flag that we just want to make sure that legal representatives make sure that the amendment's already adopted in terms of parks, the language is consistent. And the next question I have, I don't think it'll be a zoning text or map amendment, but some residents have identified their interest in seeing that neighborhood communication plan, to see it say "shall" instead of "should." I know that's talking about the point system in the business ordinance, but is there anything that you can recall, Mr. Yandrick, in the zoning text or map amendment that speaks to neighborhood communication plans that... Essentially, I'd like the staff and attorneys to let us know, what's the appropriate time to lift the hood if we want to make any of those changes? I don't think it's now. I think that even, it might not even be at the business ordinance, because that's talking about the point system. It might actually be with the application that the clerk's office would issue, which will, I believe, come before City Council for ratification after the dust settles with this. Mr. Murphy or others, do you want to reflect on, when's the right time for us if we wanted to add more language in terms of neighborhood communication plan when it comes to the initial approval or the annual renewal that comes? Is it at the business ordinance level, or it's not at the zoning text and map, correct?
No, it's not in the zoning draft, but it shows up in two places in the business ordinance, one in the application requirement, and then there's a scoring section when the clerk is scoring the application that requires the neighborhood communication plan. And then, on the renewal, I'll have to check, I think the clerk is supposed to look at that in terms of whether they complied with their neighborhood community plan as part of the renewal. So, it could be in the business, I know it's definitely in there twice, it could be in there three times, in three different sections, and it does say "should" as opposed to "shall."
But there can be further detail that's spelled out in the application that the clerk's office will be bringing forth in a set period of days after the enactment of these ordinances, correct?
Correct, and I think the clerk is also intending to bring kind of a scoring guide for adoption by resolution to avoid challenges later on as to whether or not it was adopted by council or was imposed by the clerk.
And would it be appropriate for the business ordinance if we want to say in terms of, like, the annual renewal process, that it shall require, you know, a submission of that neighborhood communication plan?
No, I think that was a good suggestion. It should, probably should say "shall" in all three places in the business ordinance. It's a simple amendment.
But so, it's not relevant for the zoning text and map? We'll look under the hood when we get to the business ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I've got four city council members here with me. I think the sense of all, even if they're not physically in the room right now, is to table this for, postpone it for one week, so that way we can have those final amendments further refined, further researched, and decisions can be made in the most comprehensive and thoughtful way. So, do the four, okay, the three other city council members with me, are you comfortable with postponing for one week?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm not going to ask for the motion, because if I ain't got four votes, it ain't passing, and we just keep talking. So, is there a motion to postpone?
Move by Carrington.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by present Pro Tem Carrington, seconded by Councilwoman James, that we postpone for one week the adoption of the ordinance to amend the City of Pontiac zoning ordinance to include the adult-use marijuana businesses in the designated overlay districts and amend Appendix B of the municipal code. So, with that, roll call on the postponement for one week. Madam Deputy Clerk?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
And we've got a Parker in the room.
Parker?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The second reading is postponed to our next regular meeting of the City Council. Now, we are at number twelve, adoption of the City of Pontiac adult-use marijuana business ordinance. So, what we go now is to that ordinance and the amendments that are queued up for that. Administration slash Mr. Murphy, any summary updates you'd like to give us before we start? Overall deliberations and specific amendment considerations?
So, most of the proposed amendments tie in with the zoning ordinance changes which have been deferred. For example, Amendment One changes the number of retailers and the number of social equity retailers. And then, on the buffering calculation, there's a couple of changes in there, which I think I should coordinate with Mr. Yandrick and Mr. Kelly so that both ordinances use the same language. Probably the one area that's not tied in with the zoning amendments would be the hours of operation for retailer establishments and social equity retailers and designated consumption lounges. So, that would be Amendment Two provides that retailer establishments and social equity retailer establishments in the downtown overlay be closed from 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM, which is a change from the prior open 24-hours provision. And then, the same thing with the designated consumption lounges, they have to be closed between 2:00 AM and 7:00 AM, and that's Amendment Four. So, those two amendments basically are changes of hours based on council's suggestions a couple of meetings ago.
Is there a city council member who would like to make the amendment for Section Eight Marijuana Business Rules and Regulations that, as redlined, replaces the, and clarifies the language in terms of retailer establishments and social equity retailer establishments located in the downtown overlay district shall be closed for business, and no sale or other distribution of marijuana in any form shall occur upon the premises between the hours of 2:00 AM and 7:00 AM? And we already did the amendment for the drive-through, or is that, and walk-up, or does that also need to be updated?
That would need to be updated to conform with the proposed zoning ordinance amendments from Mr. Yandrick's office to cover, make it more comprehensive. There's a safety concern about not only drive-throughs but walk-up windows, which you have seen during the pandemic at some of these locations in other cities, and also curbside service because of traffic in the parking lot with people walking to and fro between a window and their car, or staff from the entity servicing people in their cars in the parking lot. So, the one thing I would add is these provisions are covered in the zoning ordinance, so the choice would be to have them in both or just have it in the zoning ordinance. And it should also cover Class A micro businesses because they do engage in retail operations also.
So, Section Eight Marijuana Business Rules and Regulations, Subsection B, if moved for amendment, it strikes C2 before the word downtown and then strikes adult-use marijuana business after the word downtown. It also adds a sentence at the end of Subsection B, "Retailer establishments and social equity retailer establishments located in the downtown overlay district shall be closed for business, comma, and no sale or other distribution of marijuana in any form shall occur upon the premises, comma, between the hours of 2:00 AM and 7:00 AM." It also strikes the sentence in Subsection D in this section and replaces it with "drive-throughs and drive-through, comma, walk-up window service, comma, and curbside service shall be prohibited use for all retailer establishments and social equity retailer establishments." Is there a city council member that would like to make that amendment? So, moved?
Move by Carrington?
Moved by Nicholson, seconded by Carrington. So, that's the motion before us. It's amending the business ordinance to update that language about drive-throughs and walk-ups and curbside, as well as the hours for retailers and social equity retailers, specifically in the downtown overlay district. Hearing no discussion, roll call on adoption of that amendment. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman? Sorry, stepped out. James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
All right, so that one's handled. What we have right now is Amendment Three prepared for us is in Section Thirteen, Section Seventeen, excuse me, Class A micro businesses. Would it be the attorney's recommendation that we hold off on that? It seems like that language might allow us to handle it now compared to what, considering what we've already adopted with the zoning and...
Well, there's two sections. One, for some reason, for Class A businesses and designated consumption lounges, the earlier language had a buffering distance between those uses and schools. And I went back to the beginning, and it was in there from the beginning, but this changes the method of measurement to the centerline right angle method, which was what the council wanted to go back to for the, to be, to have it aligned with the medical marijuana ordinance, and would also conform with the amended zoning ordinance in terms of measurement. And then F, Sub F, sets the hours where they have to be closed between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM.
And so, it's basically for micro businesses and designated consumption establishments creating that conformity and uniformity with the language?
Yeah, and the point I made earlier, too, was that Class A micro businesses are also similar to retailers in that they sell marijuana, and the council should consider adding the drive-through, walk-up window, curbside service prohibition for Class A micro businesses also. And that's, that's what's in the zoning ordinance that's been drafted by, and approved by the Planning Commission.
Okay, so, we're talking about Section Seventeen, Class A micro businesses. The subsection E language would now read, "Class A micro businesses are prohibited if the location is within 1,000 feet from any pre-existing school. I, the distance separation requirement set forth above shall be measured along the center line of the street or streets of address between two fixed points on the center line determined by the projecting straight lines, comma, at right angles to the center line, comma, from the primary point of ingress to the school, comma, and from the primary point of ingress to the contemplated location, comma, regardless of the ownership of property or permutty, period." It would also create subsection F language that states, "Class A micro businesses shall be closed for business, and no sale or other distribution of marijuana in any form shall occur upon the premises between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM." And in Section Eighteen, it would, in subsection B, strike C2 and also strike adult-use marijuana business, so that way it's dead, just reads limited to downtown overlay district. It would also make a, the subsection C would now be, "Designated consumption establishments shall be closed for business, and no consumption of marijuana in any form shall occur upon the premises between the hours of 2:00 AM and 7:00 AM." The other sub-items are relettered accordingly. The new letter F will read, "Designated consumption establishments are prohibited if the location is within 1,000 feet from any pre-existing school, semicolon, I, the distance requirement..." is within 1,000 feet from any pre-existing school, semicolon, I, the distance requirement, one, the distance, the distance separation requirement set forth above shall be measured along the centerline of the street or streets of address between two fixed points on the centerline determined by projecting straight lines, comma, at right angles to the centerline, comma, from the primary point of ingress to the school, comma, and from the primary point of ingress to the contemplated location, comma, regardless of the ownership of property or permutee. And then there would be a designated consumption establishment shall, that will continue accordingly. Is there a motion to amend Sections Seventeen and Eighteen as just stated?
I make a motion to amend.
Okay, and it's been moved by Councilwoman James, seconded by Councilman Goodman. So this is for designated consumption establishments, Eighteen, and Class A micro businesses, Seventeen. It's creating updated language about the distance separation, buffering measurements, the hours of operation, and so that's what's before us. Mayor Grimal?
Just one thought, which is, we voted with Amendment Number Two to allow retail establishments in the downtown to stay open until 2:00 a.m. It seems to me that if we have Class A micro businesses located in downtown, we should similarly allow them to stay open until 2:00 a.m. But that's not how the language currently reads in Section Seventeen, F.
Okay. What we may do is, since there's so many moving parts in this one, vote on it, and then if there's a desire, have that as a standalone change, so that way we don't amend the amendment. That always gets brutal. Any further discussion on this motion before us? Thank you for flagging that. Is that a finger? Okay. Hearing no further discussion, speakers is exhausted. This is on amending the language for Section Seventeen, Class A micro businesses, and Section Eighteen, designated consumption establishments, as already iterated. Hearing no further discussion, roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk, on adoption of this particular amendment.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. That amendment is passed, and the language in the adult-use marijuana business ordinance will be updated accordingly. The mayor has brought up the point about Class A micro businesses. Right now, the language states that they are closed from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. So is there an interest from council to amend that, so that way it aligns with the designated consumption and the other downtown retailers?
I will make that motion.
Okay. All right, so it's been moved by Pro Tem Carrington, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that in Section Seventeen, Class A micro businesses, subsection F, that the hours would be amended to state, "Class A micro businesses shall be closed for business, comma, and no sale or other distribution of marijuana in any form shall occur upon the premises between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m." It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Councilwoman James?
Yeah, I, I can see that, you know, not changing it because it is a business, and it's different than the consumption lounges where people will be actively socializing in those lounges, whereas these micro businesses are just, you know, are selling product. And I think there is a difference in my mind to the nature of those two businesses. I would like to hear anyone's thoughts on the pros of that, but I definitely think that the con would be that they're just two different types of businesses. One is a for-sale, point-of-sale business, and the other is a social, you know, there's active socializing going on. So I could see the socializing going to 2:00 a.m. I don't necessarily see social equity people needing to be still selling product at 2:00 a.m. in the morning.
I realize my error. The point raised is about the downtown overlay district specifically, and I didn't itemize that.
Right.
So maybe what we do is if we withdraw this particular amendment, let's just wordsmith it to make it right for next month, next week.
I will withdraw.
Do you withdraw your second?
Yes.
Okay. So the mover, Carrington, and the seconder, Nicholson, withdraw that amendment. So what we'll do is we call upon the attorneys to make sure it delineates downtown versus all the others, and that may or may not carry, but at least we're looking at the right language to decide if it's the change we want to make. All right. So I'm going to move past the one that deals with the number of social equity and the other, and the number of retailers. Were there any other amendments? Would you like to prepare for the following week, that potential motion about changing it from should to shall for neighborhood communication plans, rather than us think that we've got it ironclad from the dais right here? That way we're making certain that it reflects the sentiment and the wishes.
Yes, I'll prepare that for next Tuesday.
Okay. All right. So we're back to the main motion before us, the adult-use marijuana business ordinance. Multiple amendments have already been made tonight. Any further discussion or other amendments that folks would like to bring to the forefront, even if it's just to request them for next week? Mayor Grimal?
I may be missing something, but I thought that Mr. Murphy had suggested that Amendment Four could be voted on this evening.
I believe we did.
Did we already vote on it?
Yes.
Oh, okay. In that case, I missed it.
Okay. Any further discussion on the ordinance amendments? Hearing nothing further, is there a motion to postpone this reading for one week?
Move by Carrington.
It's been moved by Pro Tem Carrington, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that this be postponed until the next regular city council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk, on postponement for one week.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. It'll be back before us next week. We are now at the second reading for an ordinance to amend Appendix B of the municipal code of the City of Pontiac, amending Article Two, Section 2.103 zoning map to change the zoning classifications for specific parcels on Woodward Avenue, ZMA 22-011, for Lighthouse of Oakland County at 46156 Woodward Avenue. Is there a motion?
Move by Carrington.
Support.
It's been moved by President Pro Tem Carrington, seconded by Councilwoman Nicholson, to move the adoption of an ordinance to amend as stated regarding 46156 Woodward Avenue. Oh, apologies, yeah, we already had that second, we already had the, I can't remember.
There was a change that was asked. It was regarding like maybe a easement situation or...
Maybe what I'll do is, mayor administration, let's see if, because if it's not different, then we might have already had a move or second, but hit us up. What are we dealing with?
Well, it is not yet different, but there has been a meeting of the minds. Lighthouse has offered to put in some safeguards, and the city, of course, has been accepting of that proposal, but we're still waiting on the legal language to be drafted. So we were hoping originally to have it drafted in time Friday for the packet. I think we're quite confident at this stage that it will be drafted by this Friday to be included in next week's packet. The good news is those discussions have all occurred. We're just waiting for the i's to be dotted and t's to be crossed.
Okay, is there a motion to postpone for one week?
Make a motion to postpone.
Support. It's been moved by Carrington, seconded by Goodman, that it be postponed for one week to the next regular city council meeting. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on postponement. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. It'll be back before us next week. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment for this budget year, increasing the appropriation in the following GL accounts? Is there such a motion? So moved. It's been moved by Parker. Is that a second? Or, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington? All right, we're talking about GL accounts. It would increase the appropriation of 101-690-804.016 Legal Services, Iron Mountain, for $10,000. 101-690-971.000 Land Purchase, $26,500. 101-721-719.001 Dental Insurance, $1,500. 101-721-721.010 Healthcare Waiver, $6,000. 249-371-852.010 Cable TV Intranet, $1,200. Again, this just authorized the clerk to publish the notice. It'll be back before us for an actual budget amendment consideration in two weeks. Mayor Administration, any further context before the council deliberates and votes?
I will defer to Deputy Mayor Stevens to walk folks through the details, although I think some of that was provided a couple of weeks back, but certainly if people have any detailed questions, they can ask Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. So as we have been working through and trying to clean up some of our items, we are still in that process. Here you see, the two largest items here are Iron Mountain and land purchases. Iron Mountain is the facility that stores a lot of documents. As I mentioned previously, we are in the process of calling back those documents and digitizing them and/or just destroying them as per our record retention policy, so that we will not have this continuing bill with Iron Mountain moving into the future. Land purchases, we had not originally anticipated some of the opportunities that we had through Oakland County's land sale, and so this covers that. And then we just have a few items of issues that, even though we may have had the money, it was not put into the right categories to make sure that healthcare and dental insurance and all of that was paid for. So it's just putting money where it belongs.
Any discussion on the matter? This is authorizing the clerk to publish the notice. It'll be back before us in two weeks. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution, authorizing the clerk to publish the notice of the budget amendment as proposed. Madam Deputy Clerk?
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. The city clerk is hereby authorized to publish that proposed budget amendment, and we'll see it in two weeks. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment for this fiscal year regarding Code Enforcement Division?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. This is in regards to increasing the appropriation in GL account 101-733-702.004 overtime wages by $20,000. 101-733-7more9.001 Motor, Fuel, Oil, and Lubricants, $2,000. 101-733-818.006 Contractual Mowing Services, $25,000. And 101-733-852.010 Services, Cable TV Intranet, $2,640. Mayor Administration, you have the floor to give us the context.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, too, is just for publishing a proposed budget amendment, and it pertains to the Code Enforcement Division to make sure that they have the resources that they need to properly do their job in terms of abatement of long grass, for example, making sure that their motor pool, the cars that are used by code enforcement officers, have the budget to provide for a proper maintenance of those vehicles, and also to allow for the possibility of overtime from time to time for code enforcement inspectors.
All right. So we have, Councilman Goodman identifies in the memo, there's, the amount for overtime wages shows $18,000, but the language... It's wrong, the language, I believe. It's wrong across the board? Yeah, so we have page three, in the whereas, it does say $18,000. Yeah. Do you, do you have a good sense on if we're talking about 20,000 or 18,000? Obviously, this is a posting of the budget amendment, so it's not the final consideration, but we can tweak it now if you already know right now what the, what the deal is. Twenty? All right, so Councilman Goodman would like to move to amend so that for GL account number 101-733-702.004 overtime wages, it's $20,000. Correct. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved by Goodman, seconded by Nicholson. Any discussion to modify that overtime wages for this published, publishing of the proposed budget amendment, so that way the committee knows what we're talking about, is $20,000 for overtime wages? Hearing no further discussion? Roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk, just on that one change, replacing the $18,000 figure for overtime wages with $20,000.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That amendment, that motion carries. The amendment passes, so we're now back to the main motion as amended. I would like, for the community's benefit, to say, this is a pretty reasonable number, but we're getting a lot of impact in our neighborhoods for it. It's making sure that our code enforcement staff and rental inspection staff is able to be as proactive and intrepid as possible. There's real value in that in our neighborhoods and our quality of life. So I know in two weeks' time, we'll talk a little bit more about the substance of that, but I'm pleased to see that action, to see that updating of the resources, so that way it can meet the moment for what we have. Councilman Nicholson?
I just want to point out, from a finance committee perspective, one thing, and I, it sounds odd to say I celebrate this, but it means that we're getting closer in a lot of our other lines, that we are actually, this is one of the first that I've seen that's actually coming from the general fund, and it's not just the movement of money from one account to another across. So this is, you know, basically, we're getting closer in staffing, we're getting closer in a lot of those other lines that we're asking for things to be pulled from. So now it's nice because we're actually asking to do more, so it's a good thing.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk, on adoption of the council resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment as identified.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. The clerk is authorized to publish the proposed budget amendment. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve a budget amendment for Department of Public Works Engineering Services in the amount of $360,000?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Goodman. The matter is now before us on whether we want to authorize and approve the budget being changed to account for that $360,000 for engineering services. Mayor Administration, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. This is something we did discuss a couple of weeks ago when council voted to publish the proposed budget amendment. This is required because there are two dynamics. One is that we are doing more engineering work, which is a positive thing, but also because of the fact that it's been difficult to hire in-house engineers. We've had to do more engineering work with outside contractors as opposed to what we had originally envisioned when the budget was passed, when we thought we could do more of it in-house. Much of this amount is coming from transfers from the budgeted amount for salaries and other compensation for in-house engineering positions that have not been filled.
All right. Any discussion before us? Again, we dealt with this two weeks ago, heard some context, had some research. The clerk's office posted it for the community's awareness. Hearing no further discussion, Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call on adoption of the resolution to approve the budget amendment for the Department of Public Works Engineering Services in the amount of $360,000.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. The budget amendment is approved. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve a budget amendment for Finance Department Accounting Support Professional Services in the amount of $40,000?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Parker. This was before us two weeks ago, when we authorized the publishing of the budget amendment. Mr. Mayor and staff, anything further you'd like us to know for context?
I will defer to Deputy Mayor Stevens. I know we talked a little bit about this a couple of weeks ago, but Deputy Mayor, anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to remind council and the public, what this will allow us to do is to have the funding to finish out the work with a small contracting house that has been helping us with our audit and transition to temporary work that, temporary workers who are less expensive than that firm, so that we do not... firm, so that we do not fall behind of what that firm was able to bring us up to.
Any further discussion? Hearing nothing further, roll call and adoption of the resolution to approve the budget amendment for Finance Department Accounting Support Professional Services in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. The budget amendment is hereby approved. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment for this budget year for changes in the estimated revenue and the appropriation in the following accounts? If there's a move and a second, then I'll itemize it. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that we adopt the resolution to authorize the clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment for this budget year. It would changes in the estimated revenue and the appropriation of the following GL accounts for one zero one zero 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 five three two point zero 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 federal grants others, it increases that ten million dollars for one zero one zero 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 six seven four point two eight five contribution from ARPA, ten million dollars, two eight five zero 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 five three two point zero 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 rev loss, federal grants others, ten million dollars, two eight five six nine 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 five six point one zero one rev loss, contribution to general fund, ten million dollars. Mayor Administration, for context?
I will defer to Deputy Mayor Stevens, who's been working closely on this.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, council, when we passed the budget last July, or well, last June to go into effect in July, we included ten million dollars out of the ARPA funds for loss revenue, which is what we were allowed to do per the federal regulation rules. What we are now doing is going back and reclassifying that. Still is revenue loss, but you see now it actually has the code rev loss for revenue loss, so that we can make, we can standardize this with what we're doing with all of our grant funds. All of our grant funds will now have some marker at the end of them, so that for reporting purposes, we can track them better.
Mayor Grimal?
Just to add to that, this is money that is being put to very effective and important use. This is funding indirectly the additional code enforcement inspectors. It's funding the important work and improved services that DPW is doing. So this revenue loss amount is funding important activities here at the city that are, in a very material way, improving city services for our residents.
And again, this is us authorizing the city clerk to publish the budget, proposed budget amendment. It'll be before us in two weeks for further deliberation, and this follows the model that, and best practice of creating specific general ledger accounts for grant and revenue sources. And so, as we've discussed and voted for on other matters, it's working in alignment with that. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call and adoption of the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. The clerk is authorized to publish that proposed budget amendment. Carrying on with that same approach, is there a motion to adopt a resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment for establishing budget appropriations?
So moved.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Parker. This does a thousand dollars to account two eight five six nine 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 zero two point zero zero five ARP PRK, public notices, ten thousand dollars to account two eight five six nine nine seven two eight point zero 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 ARP PRK postage, ten thousand dollars to the account two eight five six nine 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 zero one point zero zero one ARP PRK, printing and bindery services, fifteen thousand dollars, and fifteen thousand, excuse me, fifteen thousand dollars to the account two eight five six nine nine eight one eight point zero 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 ARP K, other professional services, five hundred and seventy one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents to the account two eight five six nine nine eight one six point one zero one professional services, District One, five hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents to account two eight five six nine nine eight one six point one zero one professional services, District Two, five hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents to account two eight five six nine nine eight one six point one zero five professional services, District Three, five hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars fifty cents to account two eight five six nine nine eight one four, eight one six, rather, point one zero four professional services, District Four, five hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars fifty cents to account two eight five six nine nine eight one six point one zero five professional services, District Five, five hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars fifty cents to account two eight five six nine nine eight one six point one zero six professional services, District Six, and five hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents to account two eight five six nine nine eight one six point one zero seven professional services, District Seven. Mayor Administration, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a similar budget amendment to the one prior. That is to say that it is a means by which to track ARPA funds in designated line items that correspond with the specific projects and programs that they're funding. In this case, this facilitates the funding of park improvement projects, and certainly Deputy Mayor Stevens and our grants director, Alex Born guesser, can elaborate further.
So, thank you, Mayor. The only thing that I have to add is you did hear in Councilwoman James's reporting on the Parks Committee earlier, these are the funds that she talked about for the mini parks to be done. You heard Director Born guesser talk about this program when she presented it a few weeks ago, and the council approved the concept of the program. Now this is actually funding that program. So if you have any specific questions, I would ask you to direct them to Director Born guesser.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman James?
I like the fact that, you know, we're thinking proactively in setting up our budget to be able to really track these ARPA dollars. I don't know whose idea that was, but it's a good idea. It's a good, good plan.
Well, if I...
Mayor Grimal?
I want to give credit where credit is due, and it was Director Born guesser's suggestion. And of course, it's in compliance with best practice in terms of accounting practices as well.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call and adoption of the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish that proposed budget amendment. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. The clerk is authorized to publish the proposed budget amendment. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment regarding ARP HRP? Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Goodman. This would establish budget appropriations in the amount of sixty thousand dollars to account two eight five six nine nine seven oh two zero 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 ARP HRP salaries and wages, four thousand five hundred and ninety dollars to account two eight five six nine nine seven one five point zero 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 ARP HRP FICA, city contribution, eleven thousand two hundred and ten dollars to account two eight five six nine nine seven one six point zero 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 ARP HRP medical insurance, four thousand two hundred dollars to account two eight five six nine nine seven one eight point five zero zero ARP HRP MERS employer contributions, ten thousand dollars to account two eight five six nine nine seven two eight point zero 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 postage, three thousand dollars to account two eight five six nine 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 zero one point zero 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 ARP HRP, printing and bindery service, five hundred dollars to account two eight five six nine 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 zero two point zero zero five ARP HRP public notices, and one million one hundred dollars to account two eight five six nine nine eight one eight point zero 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 ARP HRP, other professional services. Mayor and Administration.
Thank you, President McGinnis. This, too, relates to making sure that we're designating a specific or specific line items for ARPA funds, and in this case, it's for the home renovation program, home improvement program. If council is looking for additional details, we have both Director Born guesser here, as well as Manager Younger here, who can speak to this in greater detail as needed.
Any further discussion? I want to acknowledge Director Born guesser and Manager Younger and Mr. Bawa for being here in anticipation of questions, even if they don't arise. Your workday has become a work night, and then some, and we salute you for that, going beyond and helping the council make sure we're making informed, robust decisions. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call and adoption of the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment. Deputy Clerk.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. The clerk is authorized to publish the proposed budget amendment, and we'll see it before us in two weeks' time. We are now at public comment. Are there any requests for public comment?
Yes. Believe it or not?
I believe it.
Mr. Norman Ehlum? Okay. Mr. Carlton Jones?
And you'll want to activate that microphone, Mr. Jones. Yep.
I'm gonna bring me a bed down here next week. Let me just say this, you know, once we, as residents, get engaged, I hope you guys can appreciate us being engaged, because I think that's what we should promote, being engaged. You know, we all appreciate electing officials to come and represent us, but that part of engagement, I think, is just so important. And I keep talking about historical knowledge, and I heard, once again, Pro Tim Carrington talk about some consistency. We need to be consistent in what we do. And I just want to say this right quick. Now, I know we had a lot of discussion tonight about this special exceptions, and I promote downtown, but I know residential is downtown and churches is downtown, but may special allowance that that right there would be acceptable in the marijuana arena, because you got both of them down there. Let's make, let's keep it real. There's people down there that attend church, and there's people down there that live down there. So residential and the churches are close, going to be close to those facilities. Now, I say that because I know what's going to come around if we're not careful. If those people who want to try to pick winners and losers with not allowing special exceptions, it could happen. But I want to talk about something tonight that is dear to her. I want you all to pay attention to this listing for the golf course. The golf course is saying the current zoning is residential, commercial, light manufacturing, Bloomfield Township. Now, historically, that golf course was given to the city of Pontiac for recreational purposes for Pontiac. It was added some residential. Once it got into private hands, I'm assuming that's where this light manufacturing for Bloomfield Township came to play. They're proposing zoning ME, entrepreneurial, residential, commercial, green, and revised density. Now, some people may not know what that's saying, but we need to be smart enough to understand that now that this is in private hands, this golf course can change based on existing zoning and what they're requesting to change it. People who barter in over there, as residents like myself, we knew the golf courses being the golf course, and you buy residential property, it affects your property. So if we allow people to come in here and make changes based upon what's in their best benefit, and we don't be consistent to watch out for people who invest in this city, we are not going to be in the best interest of the residents. So I'm just giving you a heads up, you know, take a good look at this, and I'm quite sure my sister Beatrice Wright will have something to say about it, too. She lives over there like me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I just want to say, Mr. Jones, you're very effective that you wrap up right at the last second. So I don't know if you're ever paying attention, or it's just like serendipitous, but it's really beautiful.
Ms. Patrice Wright?
Beatrice.
Beatrice Wright, I'm sorry.
Beatrice, thank you. Mayor, council, deputy mayor, deputy clerk, good evening. You know what I wanted to do is I want to come down here every week and just educate you, because I don't see any of you on the golf course. I've seen the mayor at a fundraiser, and really, no one really understands the gravity, the real pull that a golf course has until you make four hundred thousand dollars in one day, that I made with my organization Midnight Golf. Four hundred thousand dollars for a fundraiser. Nobody understands golf like that, except the professional golfers, who make two million dollars for a weekend. But I just wanted you to understand that I did go out and do a deed search with Oakland County, and they told me that the golf course was parceled, many, many parcels, and I was surprised to see the Wilsons of Wilson Foundry, they gave a lot of land. Regular people gave land. I saw one person that sold land to the city of Pontiac for fifteen hundred dollars, and I know I need some expertise, someone with expertise, to help me to understand those documents. But the golf course is being touted as worth six point three million dollars. It is not. My research of midwestern golf courses, I just wrote two of them down, a well-established golf course, two well-established golf courses being sold together for five million dollars. An eighteen-hole golf course for, and it's longer than our golf course, it's sixty-seven hundred yards, and it is one point five million dollars. I want you to understand what the gentleman who owns that golf course is attempting to do. I think he's attempting to just lure developers to our city and sell that property as homes. I don't want to see a CVS behind my home. I bought my home to play golf. My dad was a golfer. His name is inscripted on a monument on that golf course, and I hope one day my name is inscripted on a monument. But I think we need to take care of what is ours. The golf course, being a municipal golf course, was set out so regular folk like you, Mr. McGinnis, could go out there and play golf, because you certainly aren't going out to Oakland Hills and play any golf, okay? But I just wanted to say, perhaps the city would entertain purchasing the golf course, but be wise. You know, the golf course is not worth six point three million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. That concludes our public comment. President McGinnis?
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the...
Moved by Carrington.
It's been moved by Pro Tim Carrington, seconded by Councilman Parker, that we adopt the resolution to proceed in closed session to consult with legal counsel regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with Oakland County Circuit Court, case number twenty twenty-one dash one eight eight one one six, N.O., Cassidy and Sulus versus City of Pontiac et al. I want to flag the specific part of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, so I don't mess that up. We're talking about Section eight, one E of the Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen point two six eight, one E. It's been moved and seconded. Hearing no further discussion, roll call and adoption, Madam Deputy Clerk.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. We are at closed session at nine forty-nine P.M. We intentionally made sure that public comment happened before that, because we have to go discuss annoying legal stuff, and we don't want you to have to wait around if you don't want to. You are certainly welcome to wait. We'll do our closing comments, communications, and adjournment when we come out and vote to come out of closed session. Thank you very much for your time tonight, if you are departing.
How you doing, Sarah? Doing great, how are you?
All right.
No, it's not, because I got the deed. I have the deed for golf.
You're talking about the homes that's over in that area.
Yeah. Well, I'm just speaking about the golf course. Because I have the deeds. Oh, yeah. I hear you, because I would have to leave. We still have our deed. Well, the name of that subdivision is Bloomfield State.
Good evening.
You, too.
And we just need to stay with this as we are.
We need to stay with this, but let me tell you what our downfall is. Situation is so dire, it's 99.5% higher than here. We only got a 5% margin. This year, we'll start conducting in April, either April or May, we were told, that the building of the homes and projects is 205% down. Exactly. But just think, what his value of his home would be if the golf course sold for $6.3 million. And you know what would be--
That your value of your home would go up by five times.
But guess what it do also, too? It make the way you can't pay your taxes.
That's right.
And what would you want to do?
That's right.
For fitness. So what you gotta look at that we're being pushed out for fitness.
Yes, that's gentrification.
And that's when I was trying to find you guys. Can we do anything about it? The only way--
I'm sorry, I was saying that Crystal Lake was approved, that project.
The golf--
Another one over there? Well, Chris told me that they have not come back to them since that initial public hearing.
Right.
Yet.
Right, okay. Okay, that's--
We were talking about it, I understand, I already know this.
You make a good point. I know the property--
Yeah, that's a wonderful point. Except, you know what? Part of the golf course-- Part of the golf course is in Bloomfield Township.
But what you don't understand is that the part, the golf drive completed, what was spoken, had never been sold out as we know it. It disappears. You notice everything now, and they're trying to commercialize golf drives to make it where it's the homes can stay within a certain limitation. Now, if you go all the way back, and you know this because you've been a teacher, you can see how big Pontiac was. Once the-- And I'm saying this because it was brought to our attention two years ago. And let me tell you how we got wind of this. We got wind, and I take that back, two, five years ago, because--
Well, they hired that who is going to make sure that plan doesn't enable you to get mortgages in.
It's not about those mortgages we can't afford if we try to do that to the people. I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. But you have to remember, there's a number of these papers that are supposed to be settled.
But you can't cover it.
All right, let me tell you how you can do it. You got the people we got. We got a pass through on the community. No, 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 no. We are going to. We are going to fail. I don't know if you've been that far. We are going to, that's not the first one that I've been paying. And I'm looking at the mentality of the way they speak and what they tell us. We don't go by the words, we go by the law, the tax numbers, the state. And thus far, this council that we have, they don't know that it's on our side. Well, no, they don't. Let me tell you, Parker's been here seven years. And he's come here. He's not a county.
You mean in the city, a state resident?
He's been back and forth from three hundred and forty patients. Cassidy, when Cassidy was not born.
No, she wasn't, but I've known Cassidy since college. So that's out of college for around years.
We said, I'm going to have Cassidy, probably the first couple of years. Okay, but Cassidy, I'm asking you. She feels in my feelings, who's married, her name, well. I hope Cassidy won't complain. This has nothing to do with Park, but it has to do with this. And the talent is that it's worth the shooting. They take care of Park and not of Cassidy, who is spending millions of dollars against it. But this is an argument, you know, people like, and what is the truth? The town's a lot of private property, they're all going to the hospital. Or just the local hospital. So what if, so why would people be needing money for it? They're not supposed to have to.
Well, I thought that was under the proposal that district got a specific amount of money.
Well, it's, you know, it's our own. It's residential work. Yeah, yeah.
And if I wanted to be earlier this year, maybe late last year, they interviewed, you know, virtually a person that kind of oversee all of the parks.
The park, oh, that park.
You don't allow us to see. Oh, you mean the other park.
Women, what park is it?
Well, they, they owned the majority of that park, and they did it. But we needed to get that money. So.
That's right, when they went okay, that's why I had to wait for you to start that.
So they give, you know, that some amount of money.
That's why you see, that's why you see this. But, but on the E, it says, it says that blue still stands. There's, there's blue still. And so. I hear what you're saying.
I got, I got a couple of golden, I'll give it to you.
Please, please.
Are you still going on that trip?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I think they still have me.
Yeah. I think they do.
Does that happen?
... Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. The rules are suspended so that way we can take up an item of business that wasn't in the agenda that we adopted at the beginning. So, could I please have a motion to adopt the resolution to proceed with case number two zero two one eight eight one one six N O Cassidy and Sulis v. City of Pontiac at all as advised by legal counsel during closed session?
Moved by Carrington.
Support.
It has been moved by Pro Tem Carrington, seconded by Councilman Parker. So again, this is us voting to proceed as advised by legal counsel regarding strategy in connection with the Circuit Court case. And I don't anticipate any further discussion since we're considering to proceed as discussed in closed session, and we are no longer in closed session. So with that, here in no further discussion, roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk on adoption of the motion to adopt the, the resolution.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. We'll proceed accordingly. We're now at communications. You can find the written communications on the posted agenda or the hard copies that are here as well. I do want to point out that they had signed up for public comment but hadn't been able to make it. The library board chair, Rosie Richardson, wanted me to make sure the community knew that Supreme Court Justice Kyra Harris Bolden will be at the Celebration of Women's History Month at the Pontiac Public Library on Saturday, March 18th from 10:00 a.m. to noon. The public library is located on, excuse me, East Pike Street in downtown Pontiac. Please join the Pontiac Public Library for that. And of course, mark your calendars for March 31st for the City of Pontiac's Health and Wellness Fair happening at United Wholesale Mortgage Sports Complex on March 31st. Everything else you can find in writing. Hope that drive that Liberty Bar was doing for Lighthouse of Oakland County is going well. A few more days goes till March 16th.
Yep, until the 16th. It's a, yeah, there's a huge, huge, huge pile and a couple of bins downstairs, so there'll be that and a big check for them.
That's great. So just for the sake of time, we can itemize them at next week's city council meeting for those that are forthcoming on communications. Are there, the mayor communication, you have the floor.
Just a, one announcement again, as I've done in recent weeks. I want to encourage members of the community to come out for our spring cleanup. This is a big community event every spring in the city, as most viewers will know. And I really want to emphasize, it's, it's important not just from beautifying our neighborhoods, although clearly that's important, but it's actually a great way to bring people together and have a sense of camaraderie and a sense that, hey, we're in this together. And that, to me, is the even more important aspect of the annual April spring cleanups that occur in our city. They're going to be occurring from April 17th through April 23rd. So mark your calendar, come on out, even if it's just for two or three hours one day. It really does make a difference in terms of beautifying the community, and it allows us all to really come together and realize that we have our neighbors back.
All right, Mayor Grammer, your closing comments.
In the interest of time, Mr. President, I don't have any comments to share.
All right. I sense that might be the trend, so I won't even start the clock for anybody. Madam Deputy Clerk, any announcements?
No, thank you.
Councilman Nicholson?
None for this evening.
Councilman Goodman?
None for this evening.
Pro Tem Carrington?
I just want to say, Pontiac, the heart of Oakland County, good night.
Councilwoman James, any closing comments?
Yes, I have one. I reschedule my District Four Community Council meeting from the fourth Thursday. We are going to meet this Thursday, which is the third Thursday, March the 16th. We will be meeting at 6:00 p.m. at the New Mount Mariah International Church right across from Dollar Tree Store, and I want to invite everyone to attend. We're going to have some very, we're going to have food, and we'll have a lot of information to share with the community. So again, our community council meeting, which has been canceled, the last two has been canceled, this is our first one of the year, will be this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. at the New Mount Mariah International Church. Looking forward to seeing everybody there. Thank you.
Does that mean there cannot be a snowstorm or ice storm?
There better not be, okay.
Councilman Parker.
Good, good evening, Pontiac. Have a great day.
Thank you, and no comments from me. Can I please have a motion to, oh, I will say, it was invoked. Harold Harris, an important community member, has passed away. He has served on city boards and commissions, and just a really important person in the story of Pontiac. We will be recognizing him next week. We're going to work on a council resolution and special presentation to venerate him, in part because he has served on the city board. So I just want to flag that as one of the forthcoming items next week. Can I please have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Goodman, that we adjourn. Hearing no discussion, roll call and adoption. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker? Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. We stand adjourned at 10:25 p.m. Thank you all for your commitment to the City of Pontiac and its people.